Jen, can we get you back? All right, we're back from closed session. We're going to go into our presentation time. We only have one presentation tonight, and that's going to be from the Senior Center. And we have Cheryl Hunter here tonight. If Cheryl, the mic is yours, and since we don't have anybody, you got 29 minutes.
How are you?
Might have to push that button to see if that mic, is the mic on?
It seems like it's on.
Yep. You're all set.
I just want to make sure that the slideshow is going to play here. Oh, that is my slideshow, never mind. I didn't recognize my own title page there. So, hello. Yes, good evening, Mayor, Council, and Friends and Relatives, or Relatives of Residents. I'm really happy to update you on what's been going on at the Senior Center this evening. Let me begin with what's new. We'll talk about what's new and a little bit, just a real quick thing about me, so you kind of know where I came from. Then we'll look at the numbers of seniors that we've served year-to-date, and then exciting news about programs that we have planned, and some important dates coming up. So, first of all, what's new? Click. Are we playing? Okay, that's okay. That's all right. I don't need that anyway. It just made it, added pretty stuff to it, right? So, what's new? Me, I'm the new director, Cheryl Hunter. So, I'm new, and I'm really pleased to be a part of this. I'm actually honored, and I am so excited. I've met so many wonderful people so far, barely over, not even two months yet, and it's just been amazing. My husband and I moved here in 2015 and bought a house here, so we just love it, and now I feel like I'm really part of the community, so thank you. So, many years ago, I was with the YMCA, and I had the privilege of doing Bingo and Senior Travel Club and all kinds of other programs that had to do with seniors. And I'm excited to bring all of that back with me. It's like reliving what I did then, and the people are wonderful and responsive to the program ideas I have. We have volunteers that are amazing. So, what's new is, we have new volunteers, we have new staff, and a lot of new ideas. And that's always really inspiring, when you have people with a lot of new ideas and you can, you know, with the advisory committee with the seniors. I've gotten to know a couple of them, some like Judy I've known for a while, and so we just sit and chat about things that they want to do. It's a lot of fun. So during the past year, we've continued serving, of course, the county nutrition program, the lunches that the seniors who qualify can come and pick up at the center. We also have been serving the boxes of produce and, well, boxes of like milk and cheese and things like that, and bags of produce to the seniors through Find Food. So, that's been good. We have that nutrition program in place, and it's going well, and even through the time we've been closed, we've still been able to serve them. But today, we opened our doors for the first time in, what, 14 months or something like that? So here we are, opening our doors and waiting for the crowd to rush in, and they kind of trickled, but I think there's confusion because of our July 1st event, which is fine. So, we did eventually get quite a few coming in, and now word of mouth, I'm sure that it'll pick up. But we did have, I think, I want to say 38 to 40, somewhere in there, counting the people who picked up their lunches today. So that wasn't bad traffic for our first day open. We have, I guess I should try my slides now. Yes. Here we go. So we're open. And there's Jessica Martinez and Jessica Godoy. Jessica Godoy is our new part-time person, and that was our welcome-back greeting for all the people when they came in today. The Jessicas, Jessica squared, did that work for us. And I think it looked fabulous. People loved it. They were so excited when they walked in. So some of our classes are going to resume on the 6th. We do have the July 1st celebration coming up. But let me talk about our memberships and all the service things that we've been successful at. Memberships year-to-date are 36. That sounds low, but remember, we were closed. So I think having 36 membership renewals as of today during a closure isn't bad. This time year-to-date in 2019, I believe it was, let's see, I have it here somewhere. I believe it was 134. So, we're not quite there, but I think we're on track. I truly believe that by the end of the summer, we will be caught up to where we were last summer. I think word of mouth is going to help with that, and a lot of marketing, and we're offering some exciting programs. So in the interest of health and wellness, of course, we're going to continue with our mask mandate. So as we serve the food, the senior lunches and so on, everyone that comes in will have to fill out their COVID screening form, wear a mask. But we've already served 1,320 farmers market boxes. We're going to serve more tomorrow. So people are being served, and their nutrition needs are being met, even with our masks and all of our distancing. Senior lunches, 3,475. That's just so far this year. So that's a lot of seniors that are being served through that program. And... Oh. There we go. I think I skipped too far ahead, but that's all right. Okay, thank you. So we've, our future plans, one of the things that we've noticed is, we've met that nutrition, that nutrition piece, and that's the most important thing, is that the seniors are fed healthy food and that we can help them to make sure they're meeting their nutrition needs. But there are those seniors who are living maybe more active lifestyles that want other kinds of services. So we're looking at that. We do have the Fit After 50. We have Hula classes. We have, we're hoping to get our Tai Chi instructor back. So we do have those classes, but some of our seniors are interested in things that are a little more active, dance classes, line dancing, all types of things. So we're trying to be very creative and figure out how we can kind of rearrange parts of the facility in order to open up more space, so that we can accommodate them. They all like to come in the morning. We do have afternoon times, so we're trying to encourage some of them to come in the afternoons where we can kind of plug those classes in. My goal is to outgrow, to the point that we're begging to remodel or do whatever we can in order to accommodate more of those fitness-type classes, so that as our, as our seniors that are coming in, their ages are a little bit younger, that there's something to offer them as well. So, I know we can't be all things to all people, but I like to try to come close, so we're working on that. And we also have brought back our bingo caller, and he's also our volunteer bus driver. So we're working on some of those day trips that we started to take before, and that's exciting. We have all types of ideas for that. Mission Inn, Oak Glen, of course, the Borrego Visitor Center, all kinds of things like that. So they're within a day getting there and back, maybe with a little lunch. So we're going to be offering those, and those are free trips to the members, which I think is a really nice thing to have with your membership. I'm excited to go on those trips. We are going to do some of those. They're in one day, so don't know how much action you can get in one day, but I'm sure that they'll find something. Make sure I get your car later, would you please? So I think, oh, sorry, Gerald, I forgot what I was doing here. So, announcements, yes, day trips in the works. And our reopening is July 1st, and I know I sent out lots of invites, and I've sent, barraged you with flyers and all of that, but I really hope that you do get to come out, all the staff, all the, even citizens, even if you're not a senior, you can come and peek inside. Don't tell them I told you that, though, but you can come and peek inside. And we hope that, just come down and see what we're all about, and give us your suggestions, your thoughts, and your feedback on how we're doing. The programs, classes, and events, as I said, some are, we're going to resume with restrictions, but those restrictions have been lifted as of this week, so now we can offer the fitness classes. They still have to wear masks, so that's the only challenge, is that it's difficult to exercise with a mask on. So we're hoping that that is, at some point, that restriction maybe can be lowered, but we're still distancing. So those are the only real challenges that we have to work with as far as getting back into the swing of things. And everybody's pretty cooperative so far. I was surprised, because I know I would be a little, I've got to fill out what every day, I have to fill out the screening form every day, I have to wear my mask still, I got vaccinated, all of those kinds of things, but we've dealt with those. Everybody's been wonderful. So, do you have any questions? That was a really quick...
Well, we really appreciate that, and I'm thrilled to see what's going on, and we're back open. That's wonderful. I'll start down there. Did you have any, Jen?
You're having a cooling center this time.
Yes, yes, that was probably on my notes, I didn't bring that up. Yes, we will be doing the cooling center as of July 1st, and it was a little bit delayed in the confusion of if it was going to be seniors or everyone, but we finally got that kind of settled, so that we can make sure that our seniors have a place to be. And the way we see it, every single senior is invited into the center regardless, so right now, they can come as a cooling center and spend the day with us. But we officially start July 1st, which means we'll be receiving the free water, the snacks, and all of that from CAP, and that'll be helpful, so that we can make sure that they are getting water and things that they need while they're there.
Mr. Nunez, anything else besides driving the bus?
Hopefully get the mayor to say the bingo numbers.
I'll do that. You don't want me to drive the bus, though. Yeah. So the only thing I've ever heard over the years was, they always are concerned about the quality of the food. So if you got that one under control, I'm sure you'll have a happy crew there. I did hear a couple of them mention that they really liked the Lynyrd Skynyrd band, so if you know anybody who has a band that plays Lynyrd Skynyrd...
Shame on you. I do, and I actually know the same band, which does a Buddy Holly review show, so you know, who knows? I've already talked to the guys, and I think we're on board for a fundraising concert. I almost got them convinced.
I told you before how happy I am to have you there, and seeing all this outlined and everything, it's great. And one concern I've always had is, I know there's seniors that are at home, they don't have the transportation to get down to the Senior Center. That's been a problem for years. Nobody seemed to have been able to tackle that. If there's some way we could do some outreach, we got a bus, if that works, or some other way. Maybe we can do something with Sun Lion on one of their new Uber-type situation or something that we get worked out, I don't know, but I'd just really like to be able to get our seniors, you know, that want to go and participate to get down there. A lot of people sitting at home alone.
That's the next in a long idea.
So that's it, but well, thanks for the presentation, it's wonderful. Mr. Gardner, anything? As again, thank you, Cheryl, for everything and what you guys are doing there. Whatever we can do, from the city side of things, you know, you got a, just a phone call, and we'll be there for you. I got it on my calendar to stop by on July 1st, say hi, and maybe greet some seniors and say, "Welcome back. This is going to be great for our community." I was going to make a point, I forgot. Guess I'm getting old. Might be seeing you sooner than I thought. But yeah, with that said, thank you again tonight. Oh, I was going to say, on YouTube, when we put these up, there is, I know on Facebook, you can boost your post to reach more people. Maybe it's an opportunity for us to boost this presentation and reach more people out there. There's no, there's a few people in the audience, but there's always quite a few watching, so...
Sure. We'd appreciate that, thank you.
All right, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. We're going to recess until 6 o'clock, got 15-minute break.
The Mayor and City Council welcome you to the Desert Hot Springs City Council Meeting. As a courtesy to others, please silence all phones. Please complete a speaker request form which can be found to the left of the entrance to the City Council chambers if you would like to address the City Council on a non-agenda item. If you would like to comment on an agenda item, a speaker request form is not required. Public comments will be heard during the agenda item. Please submit the completed speaker request form to the city clerk seated to the left of the speaker podium. All speakers will have three minutes to complete their comments. A countdown timer will appear on the screens located around the council chambers. All comments are to be directed to the City Council and shall be devoid of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain a professional courteous decorum. Due to the Brown Act, which is California's open meeting laws, only items listed on the agenda can be addressed by the City Council. The City Council is unable to respond to matters raised on non-agenda items. However, please be aware that your comments will be noted. The speaker's name will be called to speak at the appropriate time in the order that the forms are received. Thank you for your interest and participation in the Desert Hot Springs City Council Meeting.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome. This is the regular meeting of the City Council and the City Council serving as a successor agency to the former Redevelopment Agency Board for Tuesday, June 15, 2021. This is our 6:00 PM regular session. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gardner.
Present.
Councilmember Nunez.
Here.
Councilmember Pye.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tembets.
Present.
And Mayor Mattis.
Present.
Thank you.
Tonight, we are honored to have retired Reverend Paul Miller back in the House after, gosh, it's close to almost two years. He's also a chaplain at our police department. He's going to give our invocation tonight. And then, right after that, we'll be standing for the Pledge of Allegiance and if Ms. Pye would lead us tonight.
Yeah, they wouldn't let me in the car room just a while ago, so I...
Well, at least you found your way here. That's great.
That's a joke. I really knew it. Anyway, we pray. Dear gracious and loving Father, thank you for your many, many, and abundant blessings. Thank you for the life itself that we live and experience each day and for the measure of health that we need to fulfill those dress, those callings for which we have been called, for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you for loving us from your boundless and gracious nature. In the scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor and his fellow council members and for the various levels of city officials. I'm asking that you would graciously grant them, grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times. Grant them a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people here in Desert Hot Springs. Grant them a keen thirst for justice and righteousness and grant them confidence in what is good and fitting and also the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. Personal peace, Father, grant them in their lives and joy in their task. So tonight, I pray for the agenda set before them. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Desert Hot Springs. In your most blessed name, Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Thank you very much. Ms. Pye?
Please repeat with me with enthusiasm the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next will be the City Attorney's Report on Closed Session. Ms. Murray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, we have one reportable action this evening. That action pertains to Closed Session Item Two, which the case is Safer versus City of Desert Hot Springs with Coachella Holdings, real party and interest as a real party. The City Council voted five-zero to approve the settlement agreement and the settlement and release agreement for the matter. In essence, this agreement provides that for the amendment to the Coachella specific plan, an EIR will be circulated and Coachella will need to actually comply with a, with an environmental impact report prior to, to having the, the City Council, you know, so approve that, or at least I should say, consider the EIR and the project. In addition to that, the city has been indemnified and with that, the city will be reimbursed a certain payment from Coachella. This, this agreement basically settles the matter. The City Council voted five-zero, excuse me, to settle the matter. Once executed, this document, which is a settlement agreement, will be made public.
Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. At this time, would anybody like to pull anything from the consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to note on Item Eight, I believe it is, that I had a conflict of proximity during the last meeting, so when Item Eight comes forward again, I have the same conflicts. So I vote on, I'll be recusing from that. Otherwise, I've moved the agenda with consent as is.
And anyone that had any conflicts from the last meeting on any of those items would be noted. All those in favors, I'm sorry, Gerald forgot. We can move them on the screen.
Oh, yeah, that's a good idea.
And please vote. I apologize. Mr. City Clerk, do we have any comments on the consent calendar?
No, we did not.
Okay, thank you.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Item, it's going to be public comments at this time. At this time pursuant to the Brown Act, any person may comment on matters of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council not listed on the agenda. Under the Brown Act, the City Council shall not take action on or discuss matters raised during public comment portion of the agenda that are not listed on the agenda. Speakers may not yield their time to others without the consent of the mayor. All comments are to be directed to the City Council. Shall be devoid of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain a professional courteous decorum during public comments. If you are just joining us, I know we've all been on COVID, Zoom meetings, all those types of things. We are back to filling out the blue cards, so if you're here for just general comments, there's blue cards back there on items on the agenda. You do not have to fill this out. If you choose to, you may give it to the city clerk, but you do not have to. We will call public comments and anyone can rise at the time and give public comments. At this time, I only have one public, is there any public comments on Zoom?
Yes, there is.
Okay, I'm going to start with the in-person public comments first. Mr. Johnson, welcome back. I know he also had a handout that he handed out to all of us, so we'll follow along.
Okay, my name is Edward G. Johnson. I'm a Vietnam veteran. I'm also Veterans Park caretaker in Desert Hot Springs. Honor a lot of veterans there. I'd like to say the City Council members, the mayor, I forgot that. It's been a long time. I didn't memorize that. City Council members, mayor, city officials, Luke, our new city manager, congratulations again, and the residents in Desert Hot Springs and the fire department and the police department and dog catchers and everybody. Anyway, this letter that I had passed out, it's outdated. We're going to rechange all that stuff. I just want to make a note of that. What this is referred to, because we have a new City Council member and some new city people, yeah. Anyway, at Veterans Park, I always wanted to honor more veterans up there. We only have 14 tiles left in the ground, and I wanted to honor more veterans. So we thought of an idea of possibly doing an honorable wall to honor all veterans who served, past and present, present and then named president. This is, the sanctions are marble and the base is, I said marble and granite. It's 24 inches wide, six feet tall, and we would honor more veterans on that once I fill that park up. I'm asking the City Council members, because we have all those marijuana dispensers and, and stuff, would be kind enough and possibly make that donation to help finish, so we can build this special wall to honor our veterans out here in Desert Hot Springs. It's not just the veterans in Desert Hot Springs, it's all who served either in Florida or New York or Chicago, but also Desert Hot Springs. And there's a lot of veterans here, and I'd like to continue that. And I hope that I've raised about $5,000 myself, and it's still sitting there in limbo. I'm hoping, please, would you find it in your hearts to possibly transfer something in budget and help us build this honorable? Thank you very, very much. We'll try to update the letters on this, and I just wanted to bring this to the attention of everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Is there anyone else in the audience that want to speak on items not on the agenda tonight? I see no one else standing. Zoom?
Yes, Brad Anderson.
Mr. Anderson, you'll be coming up on the screen here in a minute.
I think I'm here. Am I here?
You are there. You have three minutes. Ready, begin.
Okay. Awesome. Ready, set, go. My name's Brad Anderson. I currently live in the city of Ranse Maraz. I just wanted to talk on two items really, and one being the vector control district, which is the headquarters out of Indio, California, but they encompass the whole Coachella Valley. And, and the performance of that district for the past three years have been just, just terrible. And I can, I can, you know, that's verifiable. And I just want to emphasize that more people need to really be involved in that district. I'm usually the only person that attends those public meetings, and, and they really restrict my involvement. They won't allow me to speak during agenda items like your meetings do, so it's concerning that they restrict my, my opinions that greatly or willing to do that. And the reason I'm bringing that up is about a year ago, to date, I guess, that, that vector district abandoned its position and it's abandoned its mission for weeks under the COVID thing. And, and they had West Nile located in two cities, Palm Desert and Indian Wells, and they just abandoned those neighborhoods, okay? I tried with the state to get somebody in here, and they're working on right now doing to, trying to make some kind of plan for that in the future, but that's unacceptable. And, you know, the general manager got a pay raise this year, and, and they had a person die from COVID, from that vector district, and he's getting rewarded. I mean, I don't want to come down on him too hard, but this is inexcusable. And you have a board member that sits on that board as a trustee, and, and taxes, they had one taxed that was close to $20,000, one properly, and they have no services that they gained from vector control. And they, they appealed that, of course, but your trustee was the only one that voted against it. So taxes are not a good thing when you don't get anything in return. And, and just the Palm Springs Cemetery District, I, I know your city abandoned your last legal counter, which is just foresight. I mean, you, you could see way ahead farther than I could, but definitely look into those two districts, be involved in those districts, because I'm really fearful of what they, what's happening to this desert because of those. And I know that's doom and gloom, but thank you very much for allowing me to talk.
Thank you. Do we have another speaker on Zoom?
No, that's everyone.
All right. Is there anybody, final call for public comments? I see no one coming forward. Closed public comments at this time. We'll go to the city managers' report.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I have two updates. The first from our finance director, Jeffrey Buckheim.
Thank you and good evening. As you can see up on our slide here, our June 15 financial highlights as of yesterday, June 14, our fiscal year 2021 revenues were over 21.4 million, which is 84% of the budget last year at this time. The revenues were 18.9 million, which is about 83% of the budget. Our fiscal year 2021 expenditures are over 21.3 million, which is 79% of budget. And this year, this time last year, the expenditures were over 20 million at 85% of the budget. So we are going in track and actually doing very well so far this year. Our next large revenue source for the city will be the cultivation taxes, which are due by the end of July.
Thanks, Jeffrey. And a Public Works update from Nick Hager.
Thank you. Good evening. Mission Springs Water District is doing a line cleanout. It starts on Pearson and crosses over Little Morongo. The water brings debris and sand onto Little Morongo. Mission Springs has started the cleanup process for this project today. Cleanup will continue until the project closes out on Thursday. The street will be, be back to normal conditions. Joe, our public works inspector is going to monitor this project. Dollar General has started its grading portion of their project. Mileers have been signed, which allows the following projects to pull permits in a few days. Skyborne Phase Three, which is nine houses. The Arbers and Rancho Buena Vista, which is 41 houses. Lennar Homes, Phase Two and Phase Three, which is 15 homes. Merge Phase Three. Dollar General has also had their mileage signed for their street improvements. Street closures for slurry projects. The following roads will be closed from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM on the following dates. Monday, June 21, Avenida Serena between Calle del Diablo and Avenida Jalisco. Thursday, June 24th, North Side of Mission Springs Boulevard, or sorry, Mission Lakes Boulevard between Santa Cruz and West Drive. Friday, June 25th, South Side of Mission Lakes Boulevard between West Drive and Santa Cruz. Monday, June 28th, Avenida Gerardo between West and Santa Cruz. And Tuesday, June 29th, Calle del, Calle del Diablo between Avenida Barona and Avenida Jalisco. These information will be put up on our city website underneath Public Works, and that's everything.
Thanks, Nick. Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we're getting texts that there is no sound on our YouTube, and I wanted to ask if we could take a break for five minutes and see if we can restart the service?
Absolutely. 6:14, let's try to get back at 6:20.
Okay, thanks.
Testing, testing, testing.
We're getting really close. We're almost there. We lost audio to our YouTube and there's a lot of people watching and couldn't hear, so they're texting our staff. So also wanted to let everybody know, you'll see a lot of our staff members still wearing their mask. We know that the mandates were lifted today for the most part, but Caloocia is still having some issues on certain staff members and governments still wearing masks. So we're going to be precautious tonight with our staff members. So as you heard Jeffrey kind of trying to talk through his mask and Nick, they're going to do the best they can. And it's gone again. We were hoping that was back. It is on Spectrum right now. All right, we're going to reconvene the meeting. So we are still live on Spectrum, our channel, local channel here in the Coachella Valley. We're just not, it sounds like a YouTube issue. Our IT company is going to be in front of a computer very soon to try to figure it out for us, but it is more important that we continue with the city business. We're in the middle of the city manager's report right now. And you know where you were?
I was concluding my city manager report.
Okay, thank you. With that, we'll move to mayor and council member comments. And I also wanted to state, I think the first two items are pretty routine. So we're going to continue down this path. When we get to the item that a lot of people are trying to log in to listen to, we'll get another update from you, okay? Who tonight wants to go first on their reports? Mr. Gardner?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick little things here. The Mosquito Vector Control Board met. We adopted the budget for next year. And I'm happy to report that there will be no increase in the property tax assessment for vector control for next year, for 2022. Residents will pay the same $14.39 per parcel again this coming year. The Coachella Valley Conservation Commission met. We were able to take in about 250 new acres of land in the conservative ship along the edge of Desert Hot Springs. It was donated by the owners of some of the windmills in the Whitewater area after cleaning out the older windmills and installing some more powerful ones. They had a lot of leftover land and they gave that to the commission. So that is now conserved in perpetuity. And lastly, I wanted to show off our new city trails and parks map. It's available at the front desk here at City Hall. It's one of the most requested items at our front desk and we'll be distributing it to our spa hotels, too. Highlights six great trails here in town, as well as our parks. And our very talented and wonderful executive program manager, Roberta Cernick, did a fantastic job working on this. So thank you, Roberta. And that's all I've got.
Great, tonight. Mayor Protem?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. You know, all of us up here sit on regional boards and commissions and usually that gives you a look at what's going to enter into the public lexicon down the road. Recently, or maybe you've heard of vehicle miles traveled, VMT. It's where they want to charge you to, for all the miles you drive, rather than paying your tax at the pump, they're just going to charge you for the miles they drive. So I was up at Southern California Association of Governments and a new one came into being. And so I had to share it with you. And it's called Mobility Wallet. And I guess on the VMT, the vehicle miles traveled, is basically every mile you go on your odometer reading, that's how you'll determine how much tax you pay to help support the roadways. So Mobility Wallet is based on your smartphone and tracking with your smartphone. And everywhere that you go, it will tell you, you know, if you can find out where you go. Well, now, local government, regional government would, under this proposal, be able to tax you for driving the roads in our city. And I'm not an advocate of that. I'm just sharing with you. If you hear about Mobility Wallet, there's your heads up from me. So for, maybe if you're on, it has two components. One is the actual distance you drive. And the other one would have something called like congestion pricing. That's where when you're traveling down like the I-10 through the toll roads and it's busy, the price goes up. And so this would be if you're traveling around city streets and the city streets happen to be busy, then you would pay a higher Mobility Wallet price. So basically, I look at that as you're charged for the privilege of being stuck in a traffic jam. If you happen to be coming up Palm Drive at rush hour, you're going to be paying more. So understand that that's winding its way through. Somewhere these things are hatched, I don't know where. Probably up in Sacramento, State Legislature or something, but I just thought I'd share that with you. It was quite a bit of discussion at the last meeting I was at. We had some, going on to some of the other report, other areas where I serve, we had a meeting of the Streets Committee. I think we're still finding our way on that committee and what we want to do and how we want to, the Beautification Committee, I guess we call it. Do we ever come up with the name of that yet?
Cleanup Committee? I don't know.
Well, Cleanup Committee. We're working on the name still. So anyhow, we're working on that, but we did, we're making some progress on there. And the idea is to take areas of the city and beautify them and make them look better. And we're just trying to figure out which area we want to tackle first, I guess is where we're at. Maybe the mayor will have more on that when he gives his report. I'm an alternate for Riverside County Transportation Commission for the mayor. Wasn't, I filled in for him at the last meeting. We had a discussion of the Coachella Valley Rail. The mayor's given that in infinite detail, and you can see that back on past meetings, but that conversation keeps going. And then we discussed some projects in the inland empire. Attended the Airport Land Use Commission. There was nothing pertaining to our city this month. Attended the Seavag Energy and Environment Committee. And there we had more on the Salt and Sea issue. That's going to be an ongoing topic as the sea shrinks and the lake bed is exposed. And Desert Sun had an excellent article on that and a graphic that shows over the years how you can see the lake shrinking. And it's now starting to get to the point where the middle's starting to get exposed to shallow parts of that. So we're a little bit lucky here, thinking Desert Hot Springs is we don't get that odor so much. And thank God for our winds pushing it that way. But that's going to be an ongoing problem. And then there was the other discussion about Interior Irrigation District. The cities of Indio, La Quinta, and Coachella feel they're not represented on that board and they're trying to wrangle a seat. And somehow that spilled onto the Seavag Energy and Environment Commission. Issues locally, a serious one is I'm still very concerned about the auto thefts that are going on, not just in our city, but everywhere. You talk to council members on these other boards and commissions where we serve and all of them mention the auto thefts. You go on any neighborhood group on one of the social media, it's the same thing. My car was stolen, my car was stolen. It's just an incredible number. And I just don't think we're doing enough as a council to provide some direction and support and resources to our police department by way of bait cars, you know, people out on the street. I know we've put on a crime analyst, you know, we budgeted for that and they're going to study the problem. But I tell you, every time you see somebody posting, we had quite a rash of it this past weekend. So I would like to help this, I hope this council will get this on as an agenda item and that we will provide some direction and some funding to try something different, to actually knock it back. My goal would be that while the rest of the cities are having problems with car thefts, somebody comes to us and say, well, how come you don't have any? Well, we chased them all out to the other cities. I don't, I just, I want to end that one. On a lighter note, we've got fireworks on July 2nd. I guess we still have more meeting before that event?
We do.
The concern there is all the illegal fireworks, that the ones we're putting off are great. Thank you for city staff for getting that pulled together. It's going to be a good time. I'm sure everybody's going to enjoy that.
We will not have another meeting before that. No. July 6th is our next meeting.
Oh, okay.
It was a good announcement.
Good, thanks. I'm glad I got that worked out. Thanks for the help there. So anyhow, show up down at, was it Mission Springs Park on July 2nd? And everybody's wondering why July 2nd? And I'm perfectly good with that. When I was back in Pennsylvania, every city would coordinate when they were going to do the fireworks. So you didn't have to decide which one you went to. You would go to all of them. So for a week before and a week after, the 4th of July, you would pick your fireworks show. And then the biggest city would do the fireworks on the actual 4th of July. So anyhow, Desert Hot Springs is going to be the first in the valley on July 2nd with a great show. And I bet you ours will be as nice as anybody's. On a personal note, karaoke is back. I just got a text from the local karaoke place, so that makes me happy. And then the only other thing I have is at some point in time, Tour de Palm Springs is going to want to go through our city. And I had a conversation with Tim Esser, who organizes that event. I think I talked to the mayor on that one also. Maybe when we get back from our break, we can get that put on the agenda where we could have a discussion. They're going to figure out which map that they would like to see. And like all cities offering support to that event, I'd like to see what we could do here. What's key there is that you have 6,000 to 10,000 riders coming through your city. And that's from all over, well, the Western U.S. and even the U.S. And that's a lot of people that can come see our city. And I'm thinking we could put on a little bit of a show. I mean, for a little bit of effort on our part, we're exposing Desert Hot Springs to a lot of people who say, wow, you know, this might be a nice place to come back and visit. I understand they have some natural healing hot water. I thought we could put on such a display that they all might just forget the race for a moment and stop and take a look at what we're doing before they continued on. So we'll see how good we can do. So if we get that, could we get that scheduled for a future meeting? That would be great. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Nunes?
I have none.
Thank you. Ms. By.
Okay, I have resigned from the Southern California Association of Governments, the representative from the Coachella Valley Association of Governments. The Executive Committee Appointed Wayman Furman, Mayor Protem of Indio, and Cathedral City Council Member Mark Carnaval, the alternative members. The reason for my resignation is it's a two-year term. And I thought rather than capitalizing on it, because I could have done another two-year terms, is to allow other council members to become part of SCAG as well. It's a viable organization. The role, the role is of the Community Economic and Human Development Committee. And it's to study programs, problems and programs and other matters which pertain to the regional issues of community, economic, and human development and growth. And as I said, instead of capitalizing on it, I thought it would be good to have another member join. It has helped me with governing here and it has helped me with governing on Seavag and on SCAG. The Seavag Homeless Committee on June 16th will be talking about cooling centers. And also, they will be talking about the boxing club. Also, on the Airport Commission, we'll also be discussing the boxing club at its next meeting on June 16th. The airport owns the boxing club. And with respect to a public comment, this city council does not appoint me to the Palm Springs Cemetery District, and there's no reason to investigate. Mr. Mayor, I'm done.
Thank you. My comments will try to be short tonight. How are we doing on the YouTube? Were we getting there? Not yet? Okay. I'll try to be long tonight. No, I'm joking. I was honored, as a few of us council members were, to attend the valedictorian, street naming that we do in Desert Hot Springs. This year, we had two street namings, as was reported by some council members. At the last meeting, they did the Alternative Education Center. But as we do with Desert Hot Springs High School each year, we named the Pearson Boulevard after the graduating valedictorian from Desert Hot Springs High School. And this year was Leonardo Rochen Flores. And he will be going to Cal State San Bernardino and looking to be in the medical field. So we were very fortunate to see him graduate this year. And it was great to see the kids back on the, they were getting everything set up. We weren't invited because they were still doing COVID protocols, but for the most part, they were able to get on the field and graduate this year. So congratulations to the class of 2021 Desert Hot Springs High School. Actually, I was actually able to speak to the California Desert Association of Realtors. Once a year, they usually invite each mayor from each city, a different day, to speak about projects within their community. I was able to give an update to the Realtors here in our community, the Realtors in the valley, talking about how well we're doing here in the city. The numbers were staggering to me to see the house price, the home prices, how they've gone up and how low, we really don't have much on the market here in Desert Hot Springs. And so that's good for us. It means more demand is needed and so home building is skyrocketing here in Desert Hot Springs. We're going to have a really in-depth conversation about that at my State of the City in October. So I'm really looking forward to that. I had quite a few meet and greets this week with some investors, three of them with cannabis investors. So we'll see how those pan out. The Transportation Committee, which I chair for the Coachella Valley Association of Governments, met. We had, again, a presentation of the Coachella Valley San Gregorio Pass Rail Presentation, which we've put out there many times. We've talked about quite a bit, but I also want to put it back out there that if you haven't visited Riverside County Transportation Commission, rctc.org, you can go to their projects. You can pull up the CV, which is Coachella Valley San Gregorio Pass Rail Project. And that is a project that will go hopefully from Coachella all the way to Riverside eventually. They're in the EIR process. It is time for you to make your comments about it. It is an estimated billion-dollar project, but a much-needed project for Southern California to get passengers from the Coachella Valley into Los Angeles eventually, or Orange County, or San Diego, or wherever you choose to go. But if you want to comment on that, the comment period's open until July 6th. So I encourage you to go check that out. They have a great video on there that shows you the progress and where they're going with the rail project. We have some, hopefully cross our fingers, exciting news for Desert Hot Springs. The Executive Director for the Coachella Valley Association of Governments made a comment at the last transportation and executive meeting that Desert Hot Springs is one of two finalists in the governor's budget to possibly award us $29 million in active transportation grant. That would be the biggest award in the state of California this year for desert, and it would be for Desert Hot Springs. This would, about four years ago, we talked about a route for CV Link in and around Desert Hot Springs. We, as a council, approved a tentative map for where the CV Link would go. If this award goes through, which we were hoping we would hear either today or possibly tomorrow, this would be huge for Desert Hot Springs. We would be able to build safe routes for bicyclists in and around our cities, which would go hand in hand with the tour to Palm Springs. And the other award would be $17 million to the region or to the Coachella Valley Association of Governments, which is the entertainment line. I know I'm saying that wrong. It's basically part of the CV Link in and around Indio, Coachella, and La Quinta Arts, Entertainment Arts Line. And that's, again, a bicyclist lane to get people in and around the festivals when they're here in town. So really exciting news, crossing our fingers. It's supposed to come down any day. It's supposed to come down any day now on the budget. As soon as it's approved, it's in the budget. If they approve it, then we're golden. That'd be major news for Desert Hot Springs. And if you haven't been down Indian Canyon recently, they're finishing up some of the undergrounding of power poles. Palm Springs, I believe, had on their side a sewer project that they were doing. The, we're going to get an update from the new director at Riverside County for transportation, who's leading the project, but you should see stoplights start to pop up at the corner of Dillon and Indian, and the roadway will be four lanes along Indian Canyon from Dillon Road all the way to I-10. So looking forward to that project, hopefully, hopefully finishing after, by the end of the summer, early fall. I'll have an update on that really soon. Coachella Valley Association of Governments Executive Committee met, and we received an update from the California Redistricting Commission. It was kind of interesting to hear what's going on there. With the census numbers completing, it looks like the state of California is going to actually lose two House seats in the future. But this is obviously your chance to draw your own lines, they say, as a people of California. There's 14 commissioners spread out throughout the state of California on this commission, and they'll be drawing lines for the House, the Senate, State Senate, State Assembly, and Board of Equalization. So if you're interested in that, you can go to WeDrawTheLinesCA, which is redotlinescalifornia.org, and look at the opportunities you have there. I think it's an opportunity for us here in Desert Hot Springs to look at where different seats will be, will be drawn, and it's your opportunity to put your input in at this time. The final maps will be delivered sometime in February, I believe. That's their target date of next year. So this is your time to give your opinions. As Mr. Mayor Pro Tem Betts alluded to, we have a cleanup committee here in Desert Hot Springs that's working on getting into our inner city now and looking at cleaning up neighborhoods. We have a small committee of people that are putting together a program. We're meeting on a walk next week. If this is something you're interested in, or your groups, or churches, or some group you know that wants to help clean up, we'll be identifying lots and homes that need to be cleaned up, and we'll be assisting them with those in certain neighborhoods as we move along through the city. And with that, I just wanted to, again, reiterate that COVID protocols are still in effect in City Hall for right now until Cal OSHA can give some better direction. But you don't have to wear masks if you're vaccinated in most places, but please be aware that some businesses might still require it, some government agencies, and, I believe, hospitals, and senior care in certain areas. So please be aware, and please be courteous and kind. Watching the news this morning, and there's just so much violence out there due to not, due to having to wear a mask or not wear a mask, and it's just ridiculous at this point. We still need to do our parts, and I'm still just trying to go on. How are we doing on YouTube?
Mayor, I'm hearing that we are, our sound is working locally as well as on the cable TV channel?
And Zoom.
And Zoom. It is limited to YouTube. After the meeting, we can take our local recording and upload it to YouTube.
Okay. So I apologize to everybody out there. We can't control technology for the most part, but we're going to continue our meeting as it is, it is city business, and it is important that we continue. So with that, that's all I have in my report. I'm going to actually move to our first item, which is a public hearing. This is item number three. This is creating special tax area 48 Aguadoche, 73 LOC for 73 parcels located south of Two Bench Palms Trail and west of Palm Drive to the Desert Hot Springs Special Public Safety Tax Area. Mr. Buckheim.
Yes, thank you. So this is a public hearing for the resolution of intent that was approved by council on May 18th to create a special tax area of 73 parcels within the Desert Hot Springs Special Public Safety Tax Area. The parcels are located in an area of, known as Aguadoche neighborhood. They will contribute to the public safety parcel tax for, and to, and these revenues are to be used solely for public safety.
Thank you for the staff report. We'll entertain any questions of staff from city council before we open the public hearing. Does anybody have any specific questions for staff? I see a bunch of heads shaking no. So we're going to move to the opening of the public hearing. At this time, we'll take testimony. Is there any public testimony on Zoom?
No, there is not.
Is there public testimony in person?
No, there is not.
All right. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to give public testimony? This is your final call. I see nobody standing. Moving forth, I will close the public hearing at this time, and I'll move the city council discussion of questions of staff. If there is none, I'll entertain a motion. I'm sorry. At this time, we got to hold the election and canvass the election. Mr. City Clerk?
The property owner has voted in favor.
At this time, we'll take a motion to adopt an ordinance establishing public safety tax area, Zone 48 Aguadoche, 73 LOC. Is there a motion?
I move it second.
There's a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Betts, seconded by Mr. Gardner. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. We're on to item number four. This is the annexation number 41 to the City of Desert Hot Springs, Community Facilities District Number 2010-1 Services for 73 parcels located south of Two Bench Palms Trail and west of Palm Drive. Mr. Buckheim.
Yes, so these are for the same 73 parcels in Aguadoche, and this is to annex them into the Community Facilities District Number 2010-1 from the, from the council-approved resolution of intent on May 18th. The annexation will allow the city to levy a special tax in order to provide certain services which are increasing due to increased demand.
Do I have any questions for staff directly before we open the public hearing? I see none. I'll open the public hearing at this time. Do I have any public testimony on Zoom?
No, we did not.
Do I have any in person?
No, we do not.
We will close, anybody in the audience would like to step forward this time? This is your final call. I will close the public hearing at this time, and the city council will discuss any questions. Nothing for staff. And this is an opportunity to adopt a resolution calling for an election to submit to be qualified electors, questions of levying a special tax within the area proposed to be annexed to Community Facilities District 2010-1 Services, Annexation Number 41. Is there a resolution? We need to adopt the resolution with a motion. Is there a motion? There's a motion by Mr. Nunes. Is there a second? And there's a, did you want to push motion on there or move on there? And there will be a second by Mr. Gardner, it sounds like. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
And now we will hold the election and canvass the election.
The property owner has voted in favor.
And now will accept the resolution declaring the election results for the annexation to Community Facilities District 2010-1 Services, Annexation Number 41. Is there a motion? There's a motion by Mr. Nunes. Is there a second? Mr. Gardner? Waiting for it to come up on the screen here. Oh, there it is. Faster than technology. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. We're going to move to the administrative calendar, number five tonight. This is our financial forecast, fiscal outlook. Mr. Buckheim.
Thank you. So before we have our 10-year financial forecast and fiscal outlook as required by our contract, contract with Urban Futures, we have Michael Bush and James Morris with Urban Futures here to provide a, to provide a slideshow presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Michael Bush. I am happy to introduce you to Jim Morris. Jim has joined my team at Urban Futures a few years back, and as you recall, we had Andy Heath here before to present the forecast to you. The forecast that we use now is certainly been expanded from the work that we've been doing over the last probably decade with the city. Jim has basically expanded it quite a bit and has a lot more information available to you and available tools to you as we go forward. What we're going to do today is Jim's going to kind of walk you through a summary of the findings, and if there's any questions, we'll both be able to address them for you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Nice to be here with you. I'm going to take off the mask. It's always nicer to see a mouth moving when you're giving a presentation, so great to be here. We're going to do a summary tonight of the forecast model that we have developed for the city. As Mike said, we pivoted off of your previous forecast model, put it into our new forecast platform, and we're happy to dive into the backend of that, to the extent people want to understand how that forecast model produces a forecast for you. We've done that with your management team so that they understand it. Tonight, however, for your purposes and the public, we're going to provide you a summary of really the, the outputs of that forecast model, show you the forecast, and talk about a fiscal outlook, and identify some of the strengths and opportunities for the city, and then some of the challenges for it to be concerned about as we look out 10 years. Hopefully this works. Fantastic. This is just a table of contents. You were provided a hard copy of that. Members of the public can see it online in the agenda packet that tells you where, what we're going to cover this evening. We could spend a lot of time talking about this. I've been asked to keep this to about 10, 15 minutes, so I'm going to try to be concise. And if you have questions, though, please ask, and we're happy to focus in and drill down on any particular area. So we want to do a little bit of background to understand the forecast model that is prepared in a custom model for the city. We think it's helpful to have members of the public and even yourselves maybe understand the difference of why do you need a forecast model, and how is that different from your budget? So here's a couple of key areas in terms of why forecasts are different than your budget and what they do differently for you and how they help you. That budget looks at your, in this case, you're, you're a two-year budget cycle, so you take a two-year look at your revenues, but really you're focused on how does our existing revenues that we expect this year and next year to match our expenditures? And so you're aligning current service delivery expenses with your existing revenues, and you adjust to really conditions that are known. The model looks out 10 years and is really focused on the long-term perspective. We take an income statement approach to organizing your expenses and revenues, and we look to align that with your long-term goals. The purpose of a model is to be able to say, what if we did different things? What if we took actions today? What are the long-term fiscal consequences of that? And do they keep us fiscally sustainable and healthy? And so we're going to align your goals with the long-term fiscal outlook. So those are kind of the differences. One's focused near term, the other one's focused long term. It's really about aligning goals and strategies in the model versus looking at your budget about what you're spending and making sure that revenues meet expenses. Oftentimes, you'll see in models, right, that you'll get a, either a surplus or a deficit in that forecast period. That's not to say that will be your fate. That's to say, based upon what we know today and about the plans you are making, this is what will likely happen. The great thing about a model compared to a budget, you can always change your budget, but it's hard within a fiscal year to move the meter much. An outlook, a fiscal forecast, is intended to give you a guidepost about the likely road you'll travel down, but you can change that based upon your decisions today and thereafter. Okay? Developing the forecast model, won't get into the background of this. We start with your financial data. We, we customize the model based upon the city's financial data. It's CAFR, it's general ledger. We remove your one-time expenses and revenues and really do what we call normalizing your costs and expenses to get those long-term trends. We take historical data of the city and its financial records from the past 10 years. 10 years is considered, on average, a good window in which to capture an economic cycle. So since we're looking 10 years forward, we like to take a 10-year back look at your city data. We develop trend lines. We correlate that with econometric data for this region. We use Moody's Analytics as one of our base economic data sets that help drive your model. We are not economists. Jim Morris is not up here pretending he's the economist for Desert Hot Springs, saying this is what your economy will be. We rely upon experts who develop regional-based economic data for various regions across the United States to provide that backbone economic data that drives the model. We then correlate that economic data and those trend lines and that statistical analysis into algorithms that are aligned to your revenues and expenses, and that drives the model. We focus on creating graphical outputs, some of which you'll see tonight, that help translate that information in the model into usable data. All right. Some of the general assumptions, just so you understand it. We took the two-year budget that you just recently adopted. That's the baseline data that drives the model. It includes your general fund, your public safety fund, your health and wellness fund, and includes the reserve that you've been developing, the emergency reserve through your cannabis revenues. The growth in cannabis revenues that are included in this are based upon staff's continuing work in estimating that growth model based upon permits and development that is coming online. It also includes, at this point, an estimate of what would be available or put to for annual debt service on some prospective new or proposed new public safety facilities. That's just a proposed item, but that amount of money, about 825,000, is assumed in the forecast for the entire 10 years. All right? Questions? All right. I could spend a lot of time on this. I will not, because it can take us down some rabbit trails that don't allow for our time to be met, but we provide this as a background piece of data to help you and the public understand what are the basic drivers of the model. Because we, the model itself, and I'll just show you on the next page, a summary of it, and I'll go back. This is just a summary of it. Behind this are about 10 different modules that drive each of those categories of revenues and expenses, and correlates that with all the econometric data. That's not very helpful to look at, so we roll it up into this summary that you're seeing here about your key categories, your key revenue expense categories. What is the historical average annual growth rate? That's the AAGR, your average annual growth rate. So again, we're looking for trends. And then what are we forecasting on an average annual growth rate? Does that mean, for example, that cannabis tax revenue is going to grow by 3.16% every year in your forecast? Absolutely not. It varies based upon the forecasting algorithm, but on average, that's the expected growth rate in the forecast model for that revenue source. So this allows you to see how it differs the past 10 years from the forecast period. What are the trend lines that we're choosing? Because the model is set up to allow you to choose a aggressive trend line, an average trend line, a moderate trend line, or a, well, I'm sorry, a conservative trend line, or a pessimistic trend line. We generally recommend you stick with the conservative or average trend lines, but based upon local conditions, there could be reasons in which you might pick an aggressive trend line or a very pessimistic one. So that's the level of customization that can be provided to drive your model. Okay? Just in general, you will note that our forecast expectations for both revenue and expenses are lower than your prior history. There are reasons for that based upon the two-year budget that you adopted and some stabilization that has been done with the city's budgeting. And so we feel pretty good about this forecast in terms of its outlook, but one of the important things you will always hear from us is that a forecast is only as good as the base information that it's fed. And so regularly updating that forecast, as you have done previously, is a best practice that is important, because if you looked at this forecast a year from now and it was based upon the same data that we are presenting it to you tonight, it's really not worth much to you at that point. Things have changed. The, the economy's changed. The recovery from the pandemic has changed. All of those values and numbers and algorithms have changed, and we want to make sure that that's updated and current whenever you look at the model. Okay. Let's take a look at the outputs. That's where the interesting parts of this are. Again, this is what a summary of the, of the 10-year projections are. That's not very helpful. What is helpful is taking just your baseline projections for your revenues and expenses. We did a three-year back look based upon the city's historical data just to provide context, because sometimes knowing where you are today doesn't, it's not very helpful if you don't see the prior fiscal years and at least provide some context. So in this, you can see where the COVID pandemic came in, right around the end of, I'm sorry, the third quarter of fiscal year 2020, last spring. You can see the, the flattening of your revenue trend lines there because of the pandemic. It wasn't too bad when it, you know, in terms of its overall impact to the city, a good sign of some fiscal resiliency here. You've had since that point some additional growth in your cannabis business tax and revenues based upon that continuing development pattern in the city. These are both, you'll see in the arrears before this fiscal year, that's your actual development history. That's your actual development history, and there continues to be a little bit of growth in the out years, but it's flattening out. That may change depending upon those growth patterns, but you had a significant increase in your revenues primarily due to that revenue stream. You've also had an increase in your labor costs. You've made some decisions to enhance some programs and services. Municipal services are inherently labor-intensive, so there's a human capital cost that goes with improving those services. That has increased this year, and you're actually a little bit over your revenues. But next year, in your two-year budget, you have committed to a reduction primarily in the areas of contract labor. So you've increased your in-house labor, reduced your contract labor. And you'll see then, the result of that is, long-term, because of your two-year budget, the realignment of expenses in your next fiscal year, you carry a small operating surplus throughout the forecast period. So it's a good thing. We'll talk about some of the challenges with that. But I will tell you, compared to most cities, what you're not seeing, and we'll reemphasize this in our fiscal outlook, is you're not seeing a pandemic recession in this community. That is somewhat unique compared to most cities who we do this forecasting for. We're typically seeing cities recovering out of a pandemic recession because there was some significant hits, primarily in the area of TOT, sales tax, not property tax, but permits and revenue streams, those types of licenses, all took a hit. They did flatten a bit here, as you saw, but not really to the point that you had a recession. And the cannabis revenue that continued to percolate and the development that continued to occur during this period has really helped on that revenue side to avoid that reality. So that's a good thing. We'll take a look here then just at the, that operating surplus and deficit. It's a little easier to see it in a bar chart, and we'll just add in these few pointers that we talked about in the other thing, in the previous slide. But there is that operating surplus that you see carrying through to the point of about a half million dollars a year. Now remember, that includes, as we said in the assumptions, that 800,000-plus dollars per year for a potential financing on new public improvements. What we like to look at then as our last graphical output, because we think it kind of sums up the city's long-term fiscal position the best, is that year-end fund balance and your reserve levels, long-term. That's where you see fiscal stability in communities. If you've got a big dip, we recently did it for a community down in the valley where they were looking at by year 2026, '27, a significant dip in their reserves because they were drawing down on those reserves to find their way out of a pandemic-driven recession in that community. Here, you don't see that. We've got our COVID pandemic that took a little bloom off of the growth from our last recession, starting in 2020. You see the divot here in your reserve balances and your year-end fund balances due to your additional investment that you're making in programs and services in this community, but that's to be expected, right? You're looking at a long-term positive trend line with your revenues. You're making the investment that the community expects in its programs and services, and so it's not surprising to see that. And what you see here is not anything that we would consider threatening or concerning in terms of your fund balance allocations. You're meeting your reserve levels, they're strong, they're correlated with the reserve policies that you've established, and so it shows a really strong fiscal outlook over the next 10 years. Mike, did you want to say anything before we get to the fiscal outlook?
No stimulus money in there.
Oh, yes, good point. There's also no stimulus money in this. That money is expected to be received. You know the amounts, but none of that is programmed into your forecast. So this is your baseline revenues and expenses and doesn't include those additional revenues or how you might allocate those for budgetary purposes. Thanks, Mike.
Or replenishing.
Or replenishing reserves. Continue to grow those reserves, because we'll talk about the reserve levels in just a moment here as we look at this. Here, we want to just summarize for you our basic takeaways from the forecast on your strength and opportunities as we look at your forecast and your financial structure. And then we'll take a look at the next slide at some areas of concern and maybe some challenges where we want you to focus some attention. One of the strengths that the city has is revenue diversity. We look at that metric as an important aspect of cities so that you're not tied to any one source of revenue. Yes, the cannabis represents about 30% of your revenues, but when you look at other communities, you will see sometimes property tax, sometimes sales tax, upwards of 50, 60% of their revenues. When you're reliant on one source like that, to the extent that you see a recession or an economic change in the region that affects that revenue source, you've got a high risk for variability in your revenue that you can only respond to with a significant diminution in services. So revenue diversity is a positive thing. Bit of a risk about over-concentration on cannabis, as we talked about, but it's something you need to focus on, and we'll talk about that in the next slide. But overall, revenue diversities, a strength for the city. Pension and capital financing, strong area for the city. We reviewed this with your staff, and we're talking about your pension liabilities, which are significantly lower as compared to other communities. So you have a very comparatively healthy, what we call an unfunded liability payment annually that you make to CalPERS for that pension. It is not exorbitant. It is not disproportionate to your general fund revenues and your workforce base, and that is a different position than you will find with many communities around the state of California. Who have large liabilities, have a growing liability, have a pension bubble that they are looking at in the next 10 years that necessitates some intervention in looking at how to manage that pension liability because it's going to crowd out the provision of other services. Desert Hot Springs, we don't, that's not in your future. That's a strength for you. Because that, combined with the fact that currently you have fairly low amounts dedicated to capital financing, creates this opportunity that is now in your two-year budget for looking at additional capital financing or capacity for financing that would exist to put towards needs that you may have for capital improvements or infrastructure in the community. Great opportunity, great strength to have. Finally, another positive area, an opportunity. This one, we color blue because it's a little bit more of an area we want you to focus on. It's stability, but requires some management focus, and that's your annual operating surplus, right? We talked about that, we saw that. It's about 500,000 a year. It's not large, but it's sufficient enough that it's growing your reserves over time, which is great. It's healthy, but it's not enough to cushion that we'd say, oh, yes, you don't have to worry, you've got surplus to spend. Something that you have to manage now is your revenue streams, and we get more dialed in on what the projections are for that cannabis growth over time in the next 10 years. That may change. That operating surplus hopefully will continue to grow and enlarge, but right now, it's, you know, it's modest, and it assumes, I want you to think about this, right, fiscal discipline, that next year, you stick to your two-year budget where you've got a reduction in your expenses to bring that into alignment with your revenues so that you create that operating surplus in the forecast. All right? Questions? All right. Let's then address, lastly, a couple of challenges and areas that we want you to focus on. Revenue volatility. There are three revenue sources that are important to the city that tend to have what we call high volatility, meaning they're subject to external economic factors that the city doesn't control that cause them to historically and likely in the future have a high variance from year to year. It's TOT revenue, it's cannabis taxes, and it's sales taxes. We say that for cannabis taxes simply because we just don't know, right? They're new, we don't have a good historical data like we do with sales tax data and TOT, which has statewide databases that we can look at to know. Cannabis taxes are new around the state. We don't know whether they're highly volatile. We just put them on the list because we want people to be cautious when it's an important part of their revenue mix. So thinking about that, what do we, what's our advice to you? Make sure you focus on maintaining those adequate levels of reserve. You've got that now. It shows it building in your forecast. We just want you to be aware of that and keep managing in that responsible way so that those reserves are there to deal with the volatility that will come in your revenue streams. Makes sense? All right. Second point, working capital or liquidity, they're kind of synonymous terms. And this is really the amount that you have in your fund balance that you need every year to simply cash flow your year, right? The way cities operate, as Jeffrey struggles with, the city management team struggles with every year, not struggles with, but has to deal with every year, is the fact that when your revenues come in, don't align with when your expenses come in. So there's a mismatch as the year goes on. You have to have enough working capital in order for that, those expenses to be paid when they come in despite when the revenues are, and those are episodic throughout the year. So when we look at this, while your reserve levels are being met in the forecast, and you saw that in a healthy way, it's not quite so much that you have enough, you have a fund balance in which you have that working capital liquidity in there designated as saying, hey, here's how much capital we need set aside in our fund balance in order to deal with that variance within a year of the revenue mismatches between our revenues and expenses. So it's something to take a look at. It may be there, but we're recommending that staff go back and take a look and make sure that that liquidity is there so that you're not both using that liquidity, but it's also reserved so that when you need the reserve for an emergency that occurs, that reserve is actually there and you haven't used it for cash flow. Again, not a huge concern, but one we want you to be, an area of focus, we want you to think about. And finally, labor cost trends. And this is one that appears on almost every radar of every city that we do this. It's tough to manage. Labor costs, human capital is a tough thing to manage for almost every public entity. It requires discipline. It's done year over year. It's done year after year. It's done through changes in council. It's done through a negotiation process with your public employees. And a forecast can actually help that process, and we hope this does. Because the purpose of a forecast is to create a common ground, a common understanding about the fiscal reality of the city. And it says, hey, here's what we can actually afford out into the future. And so when we negotiate contracts, when we negotiate agreements with our employee groups, we both want to take a look at what's the realistic expectation of what's available to properly compensate our employees for the work that they do. The labor cost trends have been a bit high over the past 10 years. It dealt with some realities that you had, a period in which you had some significant diminution in labor costs, and then you had a recovery from the last recession. That dip and recovery resulted in a 6% average annual growth rate in your labor costs. The forecast assumes a 3% trend. That's generally where most cities look to dial it in, between 2.5% and 3% in their long-term forecasts. That helps salaries and wages keep up with inflation. But to the extent that there may be years when you have to make decisions in which you level off those increases or don't give those increases and then catch up with those increases, that's the kind of data you want to be able to put into your forecast model to make sure that the average annual growth rate of that isn't exceeding what you had hoped so, because that's your biggest cost. Delivery of public services is a labor function. And so sticking to and managing those labor costs is an important admonition we give to all of our cities, because that is the most fundamental, fundamentally important component of sustaining your fiscal health. Because once those increases occur, they rarely go backwards. You can flatten them off. You can say, hey, look, this year was a tough year. 2020 pandemic was a tough year. You know, we can hold the line for a year or two, but you've got employees who are dealing with their own inflationary costs on their own budgets and are saying eventually, hey, we need to catch back up because, you know, our purchasing power has been eroded by inflationary aspects. And so it eventually comes back, and we saw that in your past 10 years. So being cognizant and being very prudent in how you do that is good. We hope the forecast helps that. And what the forecast model can do is it can help you look at labor cost analysis and say, well, what if we did a 2.5% increase? Or what if we did a 3% increase? Or if we missed the last two years, and what if we did a 4% increase this year? What does that look like long-term over the next 10 years? Can we afford that? We can run those hypotheticals through the model. You can show them to your labor groups at the table and hopefully come to a good understanding about what can be afforded by the city and keep the employees there motivated and doing a good job. Okay, that's it. I know you've seen it all in hard copy when it was in your packet, so if you have some questions, we're happy to answer them here, or you can certainly always pick our brains post-presentation to the extent needed.
Thank you very much. This is a receive and file item, but we do have to take public comments. I'm going to do that first. Is there any public comments on Zoom?
No, there is not.
Any public comments in person?
No, there's not.
If nobody's turning a blue card, but anybody like to make a public comment on this item, please come forth. I will close public comments at this time. I'll go to council member first. Mr. Betts has to go first.
Thank you. I'll just be brief. So we've got, your forecast is based on actual history of the city, correct? These assumptions that you're making are not just like the first year of a new company. You've got something to go on, correct?
They include the last 10 years of your financial data, and so we do trend line analysis with that. So, so yes, there is a component of those forecasting algorithms that brings that fiscal history of the city into this model.
Okay, so I'm not going to get into questions and all this, but we have this model here that's basically tracking all the different categories and where they're going to be. And of course, it'll be interesting to see where we are each year, as it is with every forecast, how we're doing against plan. What's the practical timeframe for you to come back with an update to where, say, okay, it's time for you to see how we did against plan? To me, the most critical thing about, you know, budget management is monitoring. And so my question to you is, when do you think it's practical to come back in? I mean, if you came back two weeks from now, it's all going to look the same. Come back 10 years from now, we missed the boat.
It's a great question, and I think it deserves sort of a two-part answer. In terms of coming back to you, we recommend that the model be updated in at least two different circumstances. One, you, it deserves an annual update at a minimum, and that is in your plan generally by your city management to have that updated like we are doing here today with an annual update that makes sure that the numbers you're seeing are based upon your current budget and the current economic data. When you are making large decisions, that is, that might have a long-term financial impact, that is the other time to consider the opportunity to update the model numbers and to update the economic data feeding the model, and then to be able to look at what is the long-term fiscal impact of these options that we may have for these decisions. We've talked about a couple. Could be capital financing in terms of new investments that would create long-term debt. That might be a good example. It could be in the labor negotiation where you're looking at a multi-year agreement with a labor group, and that labor cost increase should be looked at in terms of its long-term fiscal impact. So those are the two occasions where we recommend it. And council member, you are correct that it's important to look at how well did we hit the mark, but equally important is if we came back to you a month from now, when the economic data is updated, that would change the model in a slight way. You're correct, you wouldn't see any difference in it, but every time we update it, the economic data that drives this will absolutely change because they're constantly updating their forecast about what they think the regional economy looks like and how that affects the city.
Okay, so I'll abbreviate my comments and just say that I'd like to see that this comes back to us, the same exact one, because I'm going to pin this up on my bulletin board and watch.
I like it.
But I like to see the same format come back and then show, you know, plan and an actual. And then obviously, if there's councils considering some major spending initiative or there's some other outside factor come along, that this also be brought along and say, okay, here's where, whoops, here's where this is impacting us, and here's what it's going to do to the model so that everybody's just watching. If you watch your money, you can control your money. What always gets you in trouble is when you don't monitor closely, and then surprise comes along. And the key to avoiding a financial crisis is catching it soon enough to be able to make your adjustments. The sooner you make them, the better. So, okay, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thanks. I'm going to take a quick break. I can hear this come.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Gentlemen, great presentation. I appreciate all of the hard work that went into this. It's very clear, very easy to read. I am a little bit concerned, and maybe you can help me out here. I was looking at your forecast for labor costs, and in the past, six, you're forecasting three. Do you think we're underestimating on our labor costs? And I say that because in the past, we were way underpaid, and we had, took a while to catch up to get our employees up to where they need to be another. Almost there, if not quite there, and I'm happy to see that. But after a year and a half of a pandemic, and we're watching labor across the spectrum, not just in city employees, but everywhere else. not just in city employees, but everywhere else, demanding increases, when you see billboards on the 10 saying McDonald's is offering $18 an hour, are we underestimating our future labor costs because people are readjusting and rethinking their careers, how they want to work, where they want to work, how hard they want to work and what they want to work for? So I just look at that and wonder if 3% is a little too low.
It's a fair question. I mean, in, for any particular expense item where there may be external economic factors that are significantly deviating from the historic norm, and it sounds like a lot of fancy words, but basically we're in a labor market that is significantly different than what we've seen over the last, frankly, several decades. We haven't been in this kind of inflationary labor market in a long time. And you've explained some of the reasons from the pandemic. There's demographic data that is driving that as well. And we don't, the simple answer that's we don't know right now what that looks like long-term. Are you underestimating? Well, one of the beneficial things about, you know, your position is you are also in a position to help control that labor cost. And so to the extent that there is inflationary pressure, you will start to see that play out over the next number of, frankly, probably years because, you know, as opposed to the McDonald's that may get a staff turnover that's very high, that is needs to calculate their labor costs on literally almost a monthly basis because if they get staff turnover, the demand that they have is right now, it's present, they've got to fill that position. They've got to go into the market and pay whatever the wage is. Your labor costs are on a more even keeled basis on annual or maybe a two or three year MOU that you may have. You'll see those inflationary pressures at a much slower rate. So this can be adjusted. So to the extent that the current bubble we're in, the current inflationary pressure we're seeing in the market continues and we're seeing that that is affecting how other municipalities and other public organizations are hiring around the region, then that can be adjusted and that to your fellow council members' point, updates to this can help then provide that because we're not stuck, right? So if we find that 3% is not a good number and the econometric data is telling us that 3% is probably not a good number, when we update this, we can make that adjustment. But your long-term trends will be smaller over time. You won't see them all at once unlike your, your businesses that are experiencing that labor pressure today, right now, because of their turnover.
I want to just kind of add to that, too. It's not necessarily the collective bargaining part that's raising costs, it's upper management because we were including pensions, higher salaries.
Just going to talk about that.
So that's, I think that's more of a factor than collective bargaining.
Yeah. So, Mr. Gardner, to your question and to feedback on Mr. Nunez's point, I think part of the reason why your labor costs are probably where they are is the fact that you don't have these exorbitant pension costs that we see in other places that increase labor costs annually substantially. When we look across the spectrum across the state of California, most public agencies have a very steep hill to climb to about 2032 to pay for classic CalPERS benefits of retirees that have already gone, most of them. You don't have that here. And so you have a little flatter line than most other agencies because they have big cost increases that come up. You don't have a large retiree health obligation that other agencies have. To put it into perspective, your pension liability, and I'll just say, I think it's about $12 million. You don't, and that's with a police department. There are, Coachella, we just, we helped them with their pension liability, no police department, theirs was 18 million and they're a contract city. When we look at other cities that have a police department, usually their pension liabilities are 30, 40 million dollars. And that's, that's a small one. I'm working on one city that's 700 million. We have a client that's 3 billion. And so you're, you're small, but you provide the same similar service. So I think from a historical perspective, I think the 6% has a lot to do with catch-ups. Salaries were dipped real low, they were brought back up. And then there's also the increase in number of employees. You weren't on the council when, when I started looking at this stuff was in 2011. It was interesting to look at that point. All the departments, I wrote the report by department. There were small little lines and there was this one big red one. It was police. There was 40-something police officers. I honestly, I think about 19 non-sworn staff in the whole city at that time. So since then, when we go forward and look ahead, that's when you've added all the other positions for the new services. So yeah, I think you're going to see an increase. The model and keeping up with the model, I do think that, as Jim alluded to, when you're looking at any type of MOUs, that might be a time where you ask like, hey, let's run this through the model. And we've seen cities that don't do that. Then they come back and say, what happened? We were doing so well. And then we say, well, you, you did something here and you probably should have run it through to see what the impact was. So we do recommend that may be one of the other times that you would look at that. But another way to kind of measure yourself is in the CalPERS pension plan themselves, they assume 2.75 a year in their model already. So anything above 2.75 would actually create a larger liability with CalPERS on average. So that's something else you'd want to track as you go forward. But again, it's a 10-year average. So you'll have years where you're negotiating MOUs and periods like that, we'll be able to plug all that stuff in there. So I think it would be very helpful, but you're healthier and so that's probably why you look a little better, but I think your comments are well-spoken and timely, actually.
And I, just to, not to belabor the point, but when looking at that 6%, when you see a high rate of labor cost growth, such as a 6%, that's twice your, what your expected norm going forward is, it is typically not due to your wage growth of employees, but it's due to labor variance. And what that means is service variance where you've had significant cuts in your employees and then you've built back up the employee base to better improve the services. Because that, that gives you the high variance where you've gone through a period where you've had to then cut back on services, cut back on employees, now to only rebuild. So when we look out at the city's future compared to its past and why a 3% seems rational despite the last 10 years, is you're in a much better fiscal position to avoid that cyclic nature of cut the service only to restore the service, cut the service only to restore the service. You've done some of the hard work recently in building up your reserves to avoid that and putting the city on a good, stable fiscal basis in what you can deliver continuous, good quality service without the dips that come with the economic cycles.
You know, I appreciate that. You've made it very clear. And, you know, with, with labor being our biggest piece of the budget right now, it does behoove us to really keep a close eye on that. I love the fact that in all of our models, we're taking a very conservative approach to our revenue estimates. I have worked for years in state forecast budgeting where everybody assumes we're going to get a lot more than we are, which is more dangerous than underestimating what we're going to do. So I appreciate that. I understand being conservative in our forecasting for expenses, too. I just think with the labor one being that big and the, and I think we're seeing a seismic shift in labor right now, we really do, as a council, need to keep a close eye on that. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Ms. Pye?
First of all, I just wanted to say, we had as a council an opportunity to meet with you prior to this. We didn't just get it and try to figure it out. The last thing, I want to show the last slide.
You betcha. This one here?
Yes, the last three. And this goes back to something that Mayor Protem said. We have to pay attention. At one time, Mayor Protem talked about how we did not pay attention. We can make all future councils, if we do this now, pay attention. And it depends on what questions you ask. I asked Jeffrey, when would we get another 10-year forecast? When should we? Jeffrey had already told me, we will get one, once a year. The same thing you said, if we have major, so he's there. Basically, that's all I wanted to say.
Mr. Nunez, do you have anything else to add?
Yeah, I'd just like to say thank you to you guys for coming today. This is a very conservative outlook. Again, to reiterate that the American Recovery Act, Desert Hot Springs, is slated for $5.3 million, but we've not counted that into our future budgeting until we have it in the bank. It's coming from the federal government, so you never know, right? But all seriousness, this is very important to continue to do this and I think Jeffrey has a handle on it, updating this yearly. And again, I think the point that you made about any large purchases, any large bonding, anything that might take us out of whack, we go back and put the numbers in and make sure we stay on track. Mike, you've been with us for...
12 years.
12 years. I was going to say 14, but 12 years. And, you know, you've led us down the right path. You've helped us out of recovery in a very dismal time a few years ago. And I continue to thank you for your, for your service to our city, so.
I have one more.
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to say, I requested of the council, and just going back to what Protem said, anytime we ask for something that's major, we on the council have to do the same thing that we get from our staff and that's a physical analysis. We can't just say this is what we want without a physical analysis to find out what it's about. The other thing that Mike helped us with was how we got bonds to do this city all. And we're not in the midst of bungalows anymore. I'm done.
She was being nice. Bungalows is a nice term compared to what those things, compared to what those things were. With that, thank you, everybody, for your patience. I think this is very important to get out there, the fiscal health of our city and the forecasting going forth. So with that, we're going to move to item six, which is public facilities bond. Mr. Hager, you're going to give us a staff report first and then move from there.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Before you tonight are a group of capital improvement projects, which individually would be considered important to our customer service delivery system.
Nick, you're going to have to pull the mic down or pull your mouse down, one or the other.
Better?
Yeah.
Before you tonight is a group of capital improvement projects, which individually would be considered important to our customer service delivery system, but collectively could be considered the largest one-time investment in the safety, security and quality of life for all those who live, work and visit our community. If approved by the city council, the city would add... City would add a new fire station, Station 98 on the east side of the city. The station would, this station would reduce response times and provide relief to Station 37, which routinely is in the top five busiest fire stations in Riverside County. Provide a much-needed upgrade, upgrades to Fire Station 37, designed to house additional personnel to address ADA and address ADA requirements. Add a new police annex building to accommodate expansion due to addition of dispatch. Provide a fully-equipped backup emergency operations center and add a training center designed to keep current with changing laws and reform requirements. Tendative improvements address ADA requirements at the police station while adding much-needed office space. The purchase of the Humane Society of the Desert Animal Hospital located at 13700 Palm Drive. This facility closed on December 10th, 2018 and has left a major void in our city. This is centrally located, fully-equipped animal hospital, which, when operational, provided a much-needed service to pet owners throughout our city and our surrounding sphere of influence. Convert the former city council chambers at the Carl May Building to a newly renovated 4,125 square foot addition to the senior center. Here, seniors can attend exercise classes, receive instructions on various topics of interest, provide space for reading and reflection, along with movie showings. A new roof, ADA upgrades and enhanced security measures would also be added. To provide specific details on outlining why each project is necessary as part of our enhanced services delivery system, I've asked the following staff members to prepare a short presentation and answer any questions council may have. Deputy Fire Chief of County of Riverside, Robert Fish, will begin with describing the necessity for an additional fire station and why Station 37 requires specific upgrades to accommodate current needs. Deputy Chief Shaw of the Desert Hot Springs Police Department will discuss the proposed police annex building, along with the necessary tentative improvements to the main police station. Executive Program Manager, Roberta Cernick, will discuss the animal hospital and plans for the facility should the council move forward with this purchase. I will provide, I will go over the renovation plans for the Carl May, which will increase the center's much-needed usable space and safety for our senior center complex. And Finance Director, Jeffrey Buckheim, will, and our Financial Advisor, Michael Bush, will go, will provide funding information. At the end of the presentation, staff will be available to answer any questions and concerns. I'll now hand it over the presentation to Deputy Fire Chief, Fish.
Good evening, Mayor, council. I'll take you to my Wayback Machine, which was last council meeting when we had discussions about Station 37 and give you an updated presentation that kind of expands on those themes and kind of explains the need for Station 98, which would be the East Desert Hot Springs Station. But we really need to work on that name because it's not very catchy. So in our Wayback Time Machine here, this was the last slide that I left you with and what this slide was, was showing all 5,172 calls that took place within the boundaries of Desert Hot Springs and specifically the red dots being handled by Engine 37 and the blue dots being handled by an engine company that was not Station 37 and the amount of over 1,200 times in a given year where Engine 37 is not available or not appropriately located within the city to meet the demands of the city. Moving forward, this slide expands on what currently is Station 37's area. Remember that the city cooperates as part of a cooperative, regionalized fire protection model, which means that not only does Desert Hot Springs receive aid from the other county fire department fire stations, but also provides aid to other areas outside the county. And through that collaborative response capability, we're all stronger together than independently. This map reflects all of those calls and what is within the green area, a four-minute drive time, which is how we program our fire stations to try to drive time from the fire station to an incident within four minutes. What you can see in that shaded line area of the green is the actual response requirement for Station 37. And you can see that that extends well into not only the south end of the city, but also primarily where a high density of call volume exists on the east side of the city. That's a problem and it adds to some of what that previous map was showing with the duplicate calls. So what would the Station 98 or the third fire station provide? One, it'll provide direct service to the east end of the city, but also it'll provide redundancy for duplicate calls within the city. And let me explain that to you. So this would be the third fire station and here you can see where Station 98 is projected to be based upon the current location that's been selected. What you will see is the distribution of call volume. Note that over, where Station 36 exists now, there's very little call volume, but there's an extended call response to get to the core of the city. Whereas Station 98's location would service greatly that eastern area of the county within, or I'm sorry, the eastern area of the city within that four-minute timeframe. Now, again, because of that collaborative nature of the county-city relationships, the county would also indirectly benefit the way the city indirectly benefits from staffing at Station 36, providing this collaboration where everybody benefits. The thing that I want to point out, and it's not just the specific cluster of calls on the east end of the city that Station 98 would provide, but also if you, and it's difficult to tell on the big screens, you might be able to see it better on your monitors, but the hashtagging that is, or not hashtagging, but the lines, the vertical lines that are Station 98's four-minute response time area actually overlaps quite well with Station 37's area, almost all the way to Palm within the city. So if you can imagine 37 being committed and 98 being available, almost half the city's designated and compressed call volume falls within a four-minute response time of... falls within a four-minute response time of the proposed location for Station 98. This provides an enormous increase in redundancy and effective response for the fire department to the citizens within the city. So, this is a rendition that's been put together by our architect of what Station 98 would look like. We've already kind of gone over these plans. So you can see it's a very striking and modern facility meant to express the importance of the building and the city's commitment to the cost. It doesn't come with a fire engine. We'll have to talk about that later. But what you're gonna get is an overview. So this fire station has been designed for two things. One, a modern facility that will last us 50 years is what the goal is, is a 50-year facility, but also built to a capacity that allows us to staff a ladder truck or a quint, and also to expand staffing in the future should the call volume dictate the need for additional staffing. So the fire station will have a capacity for eight individuals on duty a day. If we are successful in the future of staffing the quint as we would like to, that would be a staffing of four for the day. That would also allow us an opportunity to keep additional space for things like paramedic students to ride out, to train the next generation. This is gonna take us inside. I gotta work with the police chief on the security of this facility, though, because there's a lot of random people just milling around. I thought these were city staff members, but I haven't been able to put the face to the names yet. With that being said, this enters... That was the reception area. This goes into kind of a main hallway distribution, a sitting area. Those doors are office space. It's gonna go down the hallway here on the right-hand side into the dormitory... the day room living area. Those are more offices. It's gonna swing around. This will be what we call a day room, which is kind of where we do, you know, rest, relaxation, watch television, but we also conduct training and other things. The dining room. The most important part of a fire station, as anybody should know, is going to be the kitchen, where the important work is being done. And then, this will swing out onto the patio. And you can see that's a pretty good-sized kitchen. It's designed and appropriate to the size and the number of people it's serving, which I'll come back to when we get to Station 37. Training, while this is more mon... It's more set up for machines. The reality is it'll be a functional fitness, kind of commensurate with our industrial athlete requirements for the fire service. But the idea is that the space is there, and it's got this indoor-outdoor ability. Again, where important business will go on is the barbecue and the patio, as well as kind of that indoor-outdoor fitness capacity. Now, we're gonna go outside, swing back in, and this will be the dormitory area, where you have essentially four unisex bathrooms. The reason for the individual bathrooms is by doing unisex bathrooms and individual bedrooms, you engineer a lot of the labor concerns out of the building, where you don't have privacy concerns with, you know, male-female staff or other social issues that maybe come prominent in the future. Each bedroom is individualized. It has a capacity for up to two in a semi-private environment. And something better be good on television tonight. So this swings back out, and that will complete the majority. And this swings back around to the front door where you get... So you get an idea. It's a significant building. It's built with an eye towards the future, an apparatus bay that's large enough for the truck. And it would represent a significant, and frankly, an overdue need for the east side of the city from a response capacity. And it should be coming to an end here. And the red doors are a requirement of the contract, just to put that out there, so. So, there you go. That's what that looks like. So, the Public Safety Campus is where state... Is part of the overall initiative. And some of the authorization tonight would be connected to providing improvements to the existing Public Safety Campus. And specifically, my component of that is Station 37. So any of you that have been to Station 37, I hope you all have been. If you haven't been, we invite you over. Currently, it's kind of in a... It's an older facility. It was designed for far less than what it's serving the community now. As you can see, that there's no security around the perimeter, and it's pretty much open access. It's under 5,500 square feet. And I'll point out that that 5,500 square feet also includes the apparatus bay that parks four pieces of equipment. Again, Engine 37 is the single busiest engine company in Riverside County. Our staff currently has a staffing of three there, and we work 72-hour shifts. So, I believe their call volume roughly equates out to about 18, 19 calls a day. And most of our calls are somewhere between 40 to an hour, depending on the nature of the call, 40 minutes to an hour. So you do the math, very busy, high demands on the staff there. And Station 37, under its current conditions, cannot increase or accommodate increased staffing, which is problematic because for us to be able to grow over a period of time, commensurate with kind of some of the plans that were laid out in the previous presentation, we're going to need to grow the staff and house them while the other fire station is being built and do that in a way that's fiscally prudent. So I'm gonna take you on a tour of Station 37. I want you to hold on now. Okay, here's the dining room, or I'm sorry, here's the day room. Here's the dining room. They're kind of in the same space, very tight, again, for three people. I believe that the fire station was originally designed for a single person with volunteer staffing. The mayor may have a better idea on the actual... But it predates my time in the fire department here, and it's been the same format for the 27 years that I've been here. So the other problem that it has is that the... You can see from the picture that the size of the actual kitchen is fairly limited. It's older, and it doesn't really have the ability to cook for a large number of people. And the bathroom facility is really only set up for a single shower and limited sink and toilet facility. So adding staff creates a significant burden. So some of the points of the bond that would be associated with Station 37's improvements would be to add the ADA requirements, to build the... Or add additional infrastructure, update the kitchen, update the bathrooms. And one of the more important things is ensuring that the fire station is resilient to disasters preparedness in the fact that the generator would be able to supply power for the fire station for an extended period of time. So this is an overview of what the proposed security enhancements would do for the fire station. And you see that there are other speakers. We'll talk about the security improvements for the police portion of the site. But specifically, this would provide a security perimeter, which would improve the site not only from a security piece, but also from a health and safety piece for our employees. There would be covered parking for some of our employees' cars in the back. And with that, I will pass it off to the chief. Thank you, sir.
Mayor, Council, good evening. In this portion of the presentation, I will be going over the proposed tenant improvements to the current police facility, as well as the addition of a new police annex building to be located adjacent to the current facility. The Desert Hot Springs Police Department currently... Current police facility was built in 1988 and has approximately 9,000 square feet. In the 33 years since it was constructed, the police department has grown in function and size. With the addition of dispatch being added to the police department, it became apparent the police facility could not house a fully-functional communications center without modification to the current facility. The addition of dispatch provided us the challenge of finding the space to fit a fully-functional communications center into the police department's current footprint that would meet the needs of the department now and in the future. The two photos that you currently see up on the screen now are the current detective bureau and crime lab. Current infrastructure within the police department building dictated that dispatch remain within the police department building. But to do so, another unit within the organization would be required to move out. Given the space needed, the logical choice was to relocate the detective bureau and the crime lab. The space these two units currently occupy met the needs requirement for dispatch. The detective area and crime lab have also needed additional space for some time, so this seemed to provide the perfect opportunity to accomplish both. With City Hall moving to its new facility and vacating the property adjacent to the current police building, we considered this as an opportunity to relocate the detective bureau into a larger, more mission-appropriate space. We also studied the overall policing function of the department and the city's future policing needs as we designed what we are referring to as the Police Annex Building. And we will do a short animation here. Get this going, right? And the Police Annex Building will include enhanced perimeter security around the entire Public Safety Campus from West Drive to the new Police Annex Building to include a perimeter wall and vehicle access controlled by security gates. Additional parking will have parking canopies to better protect vehicles and equipment from the weather elements. And that perimeter wall, as discussed before, also encompasses the fire station. The Police Annex Building will be a 5,880-square-foot standalone facility. During normal business hours, the main parking lot, which is accessible through the former City Hall driveway and parking lot, will be open to the public for both the police annex and code-compliance buildings. And as we come around here, we'll go into the front entrance of the Annex Building. And as we enter into the Police Annex Building, you will enter into a lobby and reception area. That area will have public restroom facilities and separate access points to the Detective Bureau and field operations. And then, as we moved into the south wing of the building, that's the Detective Bureau. The Detective Bureau will include six private offices. There will be a number of cubicle workspaces, as you just saw, an interview room. There will also be a temporary evidence storage within this portion of the building. And as we come around to the side, you also see a break area for the detectives and officers that are in this area. And as we come around there, you see some of the additional private office spaces there, and then the break area, as mentioned, for the detectives and officers in that area. As we move out of the south wing and the Detective Bureau portion of the building, you move down a hallway, and we'll start moving into the north wing of the building. And as we go into the north wing of the building, that will be the field operations side of this building. So the north wing has a large briefing room and training center, which we're entering to right now. This area will also be utilized as a regional training center, allowing for regional training to be held locally to reduce training costs and to keep current with the training mandates required by the state in all areas, as well as policing reforms. This room will also be equipped as a backup emergency operations center for the city council chambers, should that facility be lost during a catastrophic event. The north wing, as we see across the hallway there, will also include expanded officer locker room and officer bath facilities, appropriate to the department's current and future needs. Officers will have direct access to that locker room and bathroom facilities from the secure officer parking area on the north side of the building, which we will go out to. And that area will have both male and female lockers and bathroom facilities. As you exit back out into the hallway, you have direct access to the secure parking facility. Officers will have their vehicles and patrol vehicles parked, and again, direct access to those locker rooms and the briefing rooms during their shift. Also, on the outside here, within this secure parking area, will be additional outdoor lockers for the officers to use for their equipment. And this just takes us back out to the front of the building. And as mentioned earlier, the parking space you see there, that's the area that will be open to the public, so they can have access to the Annex Building and to code compliance during normal business hours. We are also proposing tenant improvements to the current police facility, which will accommodate a fully-contained communications center located in the current space occupied by the Detective Bureau and Crime Lab. As a reminder, the communications center is fully funded and budgeted in the fiscal year 2122 budget. The communications center will provide five fully-functional dispatch consoles in the bullpen area, and those are located on the left of your screen. And then, an additional console in the supervisor's office. It will also include a break room specifically for communications personnel and two bathrooms with shower and locker facilities specifically for communications personnel. And the highlighted red circle there is the five bullpens. And then, the one on the right is the supervisor's office. The photos you see before you are the current briefing room and locker area. In the current facility, tenant improvements include removing the current briefing room and locker facilities. We will use that additional space for the following. As you look on the diagram, the left side is the area that will be converted to the new communications center. The right side is the existing briefing room and locker facilities that will be converted into four offices and a reception area for a fifth desk, a bunk room for officers who are held over for court or special events or any other event, a full unisex bathroom and shower facility, and reconfiguration of the armory. Current office space across the hallway will be reconfigured to relocate the Crime Lab to a larger and more functional space and provide a dedicated, secure storage space. As mentioned before, the Detective Bureau will be moved to the old Building C temporarily until the police annex is completed. This is necessary due to the new communications center having already been funded, expected to begin construction in August or September of this year, and be operational by February of 2022. Building C is beyond usable life and needs to be removed, but will suffice as a temporary space for the Detective Bureau. It is our belief, with the addition of the police annex and the above-requested TNIs, the police department will be capable of improving the services we provide to the community, keep current with changing training mandates, and accommodate future growth and needs we anticipate in the years come. Thank you, and I'd like to pass the next portion of this presentation over to Roberta Cernick.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'll be discussing the animal hospital tonight. Here's a little background. As you know, the Humane Society of the Desert closed the only veterinary clinic in Desert Hot Springs on December 10th, 2018. And the hospital has remained closed ever since. This left all pet owners within our city without this vital local service. To access veterinary services, our residents are now required to travel to Palm Springs Cathedral City, and as far as banning for emergency services. The need for veterinary services is vitally important to Desert Hot Springs Animal Control. The Desert Hot Springs Animal Care and Control takes animals that need veterinary care to a clinic located outside of the city. In 2019, 253 animals were taken to a veterinary clinic by our animal care and control staff. Since the closure, resi- Since the closure, residents have expressed their desire and need for this essential service to return to Desert Hot Springs via calls to City Hall, social media, and City Council contacts. Due to this overwhelming concern, staff reached out to the Humane Society of the Desert to determine when and if the Animal Hospital would reopen. Representatives of the Humane Society made it clear that they fully intend to reopen the hospital once a veterinarian could be found who would be responsible for the operation. As of yet, they've had no success in their search. Staff then approached the Humane Society of the Desert to determine their interest in selling the facility to the city, and they indicated they would be interested only if it was to remain an animal hospital. City staff knew that owning the facility for an extended period of time is not within the city's mission and vision, but bringing a much-needed service back to the residents as an economic development boost would be. Staff explored the idea of purchasing the facility and all of its equipment with the thought of leasing the facility to an established organization with the ability, experience, and licensing to operate the facility. Staff then set out to locate an organization that would be a good fit, not only in capabilities and meeting all legal requirements, but would also be interested in leasing the facility with an option to purchase. It was equally important that their philosophy in the treatment of animals matched that of the city's. During the search, it was determined that Animal Samaritans would be the perfect fit. Just a little background on Animal Samaritans was founded in 1978 by local animal lovers determined to end the suffering, abuse, and unnecessary death of local shelter animals and educate the pet owners on responsible pet ownership. After more than four decades of service, Animal Samaritans has grown to become the desert's largest, most comprehensive animal welfare organization. Animal Samaritans offers a full suite of veterinary services at their two state-of-the-art clinics that are priced for affordability. So staff has accomplished the following in preparation of submitting this proposal to the City Council. We have toured the facility with representatives of the Humane Society of the Desert to determine the condition of the building and the equipment. We've escorted representatives from Animal Samaritans through the facility to ensure it met their needs, and we've received a letter of interest from Animal Samaritans. Thank you. That concludes my portion of the presentation. I'd like to pass it off to Nick Hager.
Thank you. The Carl May Building has served as the City Council Chambers and as a community center. With the opening of City Hall and the new City Council Chambers, this has left the Carl May Building with a vacancy. Renovating the 4,125-square-foot facility would allow the city to expand our much-needed senior services. These services would include exercise classes, indoor physical activities and classes, reading and reflection area, and movie viewing. Exterior improvements would include installing safety fencing between the Carl May and the library, installing safety fencing and vehicle access gate north of the library building, installing new handrails at the front of the senior center, repairing and replacing non-ADA sidewalks, installing new ADA walking paths, fixing and repairing the roof of the Carl May Center, upgrading the drainage system on the north side of the complex. Interior improvements would be removing of the dais, removal and replacement of the flooring, removal of the spotlights over the dais, leveling the ceiling tiles, installing lights to continue lighting patterns, remove existing kitchen cabinets and countertops, install new kitchen cabinets and countertops, purchase new appliances, install new storage cabinets and countertops in the multipurpose area, purchase room dividers, and repaint the walls. The public facility bonds bring a renovated 4,125-square-foot multipurpose facility to the senior center complex, a centrally-located, fully-functional animal hospital, a brand-new Police Annex Building, upgrades and improvements to the current police station for expanded services, upgrades and improvements to Fire Station 37 to house additional personnel and for the continued high demand that is put on this station and its staff, and a brand-new fire station, Station 98, that would provide services to the citizens on the east side of the city and relieve some of the burden put on Fire Station 37. I will now pass this on to Michael Bush to discuss the bond funding information.
I've got good news to start. I think you've heard a lot of good things about facilities. The market is definitely in a good spot to borrow money. I've checked again today, because it does move, as you know, daily. So I'm going to go back one step from where we were before, as you can see here in this chart. 2018, bonds were issued for this facility. At that point, the city got a rating upgrade to an A+. Despite COVID, I think you're still at an A+ rating. You're solid financially. There's a couple of times when you want to go to the market. The first is when your credit's the strongest. It's almost like buying a house. You want to buy the house when your FICO score is the highest, because it gets you the best interest rate. City's financials are strong, as strong as they ever have been. That's the first thing. The second thing is, we're still near all-time historic lows, so if you look at the chart here, I want you to focus on that orange line, and you can see where we're at. I mean, it's incredibly low rates still. A 30-year A+ GO rating, which is kind of the index they use, today was 1.69%. So you're not going to find deals like that. The other time that you want to look, and you're in a unique position now, where the construction cost index, this is probably something your engineering staff probably has talked to you about, starts to rise rapidly with inflationary costs of construction. What happens during that period of time is you'll never catch up to the rising cost of construction by waiting to save money or waiting for something else. You're borrowing at 3%, and construction cost index is probably at 5%. So it's going to cost you more over time to build this project than it would today. So when you can borrow less than the consumer cost index or the construction cost index, it's favorable to you to use financing for that purpose. So that's the environment that you're in. Strong economy here, strong financials here. The market is hungry for bonds, as indication by the rates are still remaining pretty low. At some point, with inflation, you are going to see rates rise. When the federal government stops their bond purchasing program, you're going to start to see rates go up. And we think that will happen probably sometime, you know, in the later this calendar year. But you'll start to see movement, I'm going to guess, late fall, probably when you're going to start to see some adjustments by the feds and some real movement in the market itself. So market-wise, everything is in good shape if you wanted to move forward. Here's a little bit of detail about what we're presenting to you. So as alluded to in the discussion on the forecast, there's been an assumption made, borrowing about $15 million. You can see from this chart, that is included in your budget and in your finance, in your forecast. So as you can see here, we're assuming a rate a little more than 3%. And as you saw in the prior chart, this building, the financing for this building was 4%. If you recall, when we had that discussion about financing these facilities, the council made a decision, and you've kept it actually, the promise, which was if you decided not to use cash, that you would save all the money and you would invest it. Well, you've done that. You saved all the money. You still have it all in your reserve, and you're still able to fund this project and this debt service without any disruption in service delivery or anything like that. I think here, we're talking about doing something very similar, except this time, I think you're going to start to see some very positive movements on the investment side of your cash. With inflationary concerns and rates going up, that means your rate of return on your reserves is going to go up. And more likely than not, over the term of this financing at 3%, you'll get back to those old historic rates where Leif was earning 3%, 4%, 5%. It's only been the last probably five or six years that you've seen Leif at these ridiculously low rates, where you've not earned any interest, or even CDs or other investments in your portfolio. The last time I was a CFO in this valley, 6%, 7% was not uncommon to find investments. So we'll probably be coming back to some of that environment. So I think financing will do you well in that regard, too. And again, I think the timing is pretty well. And then, from another perspective, having financed facilities all over the state of California, your staff continues to present to you opportunities to enhance public facilities, honestly, at the lowest cost I've seen. Six months ago, I financed a new fire station in Orange County. It was $34 million. I financed police stations, $50 million. I financed city halls, $40 million. You guys continue to find ways to do things for $3, $4 million at a time, but look at the result you get. It's pretty incredible from where we were. So the market is there for you, the projects, I think, are being delivered to you in a very economical way that I think helped facilitate your decision-making, hopefully to a point that it will help you derive to a decision that makes good financial sense for you. But we've seen in the forecast, it looks like you're pretty good to do this if you wanted to go forward. Some uniqueness about this transaction, I want to point out. There's two parts of this, what's being proposed. The first is there's a tax-exempt component, and that's the Station 98, the Police Annex, the current facility, Station 37, the community center. That's all presented to you as a tax-exempt financing. The Animal Hospital, however, is being presented to you as a taxable financing. The reason that being is it's real property that will be leased to an outside agency to operate, and should you choose to sell it to them or do anything else, the taxable financing allows you to do all that without any IRS or any other issues by issuing the bonds that way. It's for private activity. So if you want to do anything you want with that building down the road, this structure would allow you to do that, whether it's for a facility like you're being presented or something else down the road. You'll have the flexibility to do that. The way the transaction will be structured, again, to make sure it's the most efficient financing possible, the taxable portion, that $1 million that's presented here, you see the debt service is about $120,000. The rates will be a little bit higher on that, as you can see, for a shorter term. It's a 10-year financing at 2.48%. That will be paid off basically in the front end of the transaction to keep the cost of that higher rate down. And the tax-exempt portions will be wrapped around it, and we'll go out a little bit further. The Animal Hospital is proposed at 10 years. That could change. You guys can change the date if you wanted to. You can go out shorter. You can go out further if you wanted to. The way that we typically present capital financing, there's two components that we target. One is the useful life of the asset. You want the financing to match the useful life of the asset. So these facilities being built, I'm sure even the Animal Hospital probably has a useful life of 30 years or more. So we want to do that. The other reason that you want to finance it for a little bit more period of time is you want the individuals that live in the community today to pay a fair share, five years from now to pay a fair share, 10, 15, 20, 30 years from now, all to pay a fair share for that facility, again, not depleting reserves or overextending your ability to provide service. And that's a pretty common practice across the spectrum. What I do think will be somewhat unique this time around, we tried to get bond insurance last time. We were unable to do it primarily because of the seismic issues with the assets that we used for this financing. Going forward, if the council decides to move this item along, I'm going to suggest that the council use the Wellness Center as the asset. It's got plenty of value. One facility will cover all this financing. It's new. It's built to new seismic standards, and I believe it would be well-received as the asset itself. As we go forward, and the financing, if approved, and you start to pay it off, we can move assets. We'll write it into the documents that you can change assets if you want to, so you don't over-collateralize yourself over time. But I think that's the best asset to use, now that you own it free and clear. There's actually no debt on it. We know there's a clean title, because we just did it. Jennifer and I went through all this stuff. So we think we're pretty well-prepared to go forward, and Jeffrey has actually informed me that the insurance replacement value of the building alone exceeds the amount that's proposed for financing. That doesn't include the land. So we've got a good asset, you've got good financials, and it sounds like you've got some good projects. Timeline-wise, we can go pretty fast. The 2018 documents are not too old. We would basically just update the information in those. Because we have so much financial forecast information, we can give a lot of the information to the attorneys to put into the documents relative to the city's financial condition and move pretty quickly. The fact that you have a budget recently adopted certainly expedites that process. I believe comfortably, within 90 days of giving the okay, we would be finished. Assuming the council gives us the green light tonight to go forward, we can come back within four to six weeks with documents for the council to review. In those documents will be all the financial parameters that you will be approving. So tonight, you're being asked, I believe, to give us the green light to get started. When we come back with documents, we will have a very specific good-faith estimate on the cost based on current rates. That's a requirement under CD Act, the Debt Investment Advisory Committee for the state. We'll be able to set parameters, not to exceed parameters that the council will approve. So interest rates, not-to-exceed amounts for financing, all that stuff you will approve. And the time we go out to the market, if those conditions aren't met, bonds aren't issued. If bonds aren't issued, you don't pay anybody for the services they provide. All these deals are usually done conditioned upon successful sale of the bonds. So approving us going forward tonight, no fiscal impact to the work that we would do with the financing team, your lawyers, and your underwriters. In fact, there's no actually expense until you agree to let us get a bond rating. That's one condition that you would have to pay for. But you can get a bond rating and still not issue bonds, but you'd have to pay for the bond rating. The real expense comes when you actually issue the bonds, and then within all of these numbers are the costs. So there's no additional cost. They're all factored in here. And as your advisor, it's my job to work with the council, Bond and Disclosure Council and the underwriters, to get you the best rate possible. Our firm, since 2018 to now, we do more bonds in the state of California than any firm. So we have a lot of negotiating power with some of these folks, too, because they work through us in a lot of other places. So I think we can get very competitive deals for you as well, and still get people that are familiar with your city that can move things along pretty quick and meet this timeline. So if there's any questions regarding the financing, I'd be happy to address them now if you like. Otherwise, I think we're open to just general questions.
Not yet. Is that the end of the report?
Yeah.
Okay. I know this isn't a passionate item for a lot of people, for a lot of social media. I've heard a lot of comments, a lot of emails. Before we get into that, I'm expecting quite a few comments, and I apologize to you, but my mind can only last as long as my bladder. So with that said, we are going to take a five-minute break. I'm really asking everybody, five minutes, please do what you need to do, and then return here. I'm sure we've got about another 45 minutes of comment at least before the City Council can even get to debating. So please, five minutes.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now. Thanks for joining us tonight. You've got three minutes. Please begin.
I, I'm very happy about the research you've done on the animal hospital. I am a little concerned about the purchase price of that existing animal hospital. And I feel that there, and I understand there is an alternative to that, possibly at a much lower cost proposal, and which I think would be financially more favorable to the city, especially after us coming out of this pandemic. And as the gentleman that spoke before about our, you know, going into the finances for the city, I think it's a good time to be conservative and look at, for the council to look at other options toward the animal hospital. So I appreciate all the work that you've done, and hopefully it can be reviewed again. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Barbara. Anybody else on Zoom would like to speak to this item?
That was everyone.
All right. If no one else wanted to speak on Zoom, we're going to go to in-person. You did not have to fill out a blue card, but some people did. I'm going to start with the ones I have, and then I'll move on to the audience. First is Beth Canning. Ms. Canning, you'll probably have to push the button. It'll turn red, and then you have three minutes.
Good evening. The reason that I am here tonight is to caution you to not do business with the current board at the Humane Society of the Desert, and most specifically Melinda Bustos. The reason that I'm saying this is because you may know that in 2018, she was removed from the board for allegations of embezzlement and wrongly, or euthanizing dogs for the wrong reasons. My husband and I started to volunteer at the Humane Society of the Desert in January of 2020 and became very strong advocates for it. We go five to six days a week, we're there five, five to six hours a day. We love it. It's a great place. The staff is wonderful. We love the dogs. And we donated a significant amount of money to the shelter as well. But in January of this year, the board, newer board, brought Melinda Bustos back. And so we had concerns about that because we have donated money to this facility. And now they are delinquent with the attorney general in terms of their 501(c)(3). And so we have, we decided to write a letter to the board. And on January, excuse me, June 3 of this year, we wrote a letter stating five, five concerns that we had and asked them to address them. Their attorney contacted us, and on Sunday, we were told that we can no longer go to the Humane Society. We are not allowed on the property. And until they, we get written permission, we cannot go back. This is their way of dealing with people that have legitimate questions as to why they brought her back, as to what their best practices are. And so my purpose is not to say do not buy the animal hospital, purchase it. It's a wonderful building. I've been in it myself as well, and it would be a wonderful thing for your community. But I caution you to deal with this particular board. I even have it on reliable source that the, the, what's the word that I want? Excuse me. That the title, I think is what I need, was not properly done when the Humane Society took over the animal hospital. So that's my only purpose here, is that if you could give it some time before you decide, and hopefully that board will be gone. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comments tonight. Mr. Brophy, you are up next.
Good evening, council. Mr. Mayor, my name is Tim Radigan Brophy. For those of you who I've not met, and occasionally I make my way up to this podium to speak on some issues that are of importance to this city, and tonight is one of those evenings. Because we seem to have support for the public safety portion of the bond issue, I'm going to tailor my remarks primarily to the animal hospital and the need that we have for it in this community. As you know, we've not had services from the animal hospital since 2018, residents having to drive to other cities, myself included, all the way out to Banning, not because there are competent animal care in Palm Springs, but because of the expense. That building specifically has been a, has had issues with blight and graffiti and whatnot in the time that it has been vacant. And so obviously, this would be in the city's best interest to purchase the building. To say nothing of the fact that this improves quality of life for residents in the community. It also supports services that are being offered to first-time homebuyers or homebuyers that are coming into our community for the first time, and as well as supporting economic development. I also want to mention that I myself am a active supporter with Animal Samaritans, and they are trusted and worthy organization, and I think they would do a fine job. So with that, I will close and say thank you, good night, and may God bless our city.
Thank you, Mr. Brophy, for your comments. I don't have any other blue cards, but this time, if anybody would like to step forward and make comments, again, state your name, and you'll have three minutes to make comments. Anybody would like to step forward? I don't see anybody. No, everybody's shy tonight. Okay. I was expecting a lot more comments. Did not go 45 minutes. It went 10 minutes. With that said, we're going to go to council debate last chance, close public comment this time, and we're going to go to debate with the council at this time about this issue. I know, Mr. Betts, you've been preparing notes. Would you like to go first?
No, I'm older one. I'm...
Mr. Mayor, I'm waiting to see, you know, what else is in this presentation, so I'm going to hold off.
We have nothing else in the presentation. We're in council comments and debate.
I want to hear what my other fellow council members have to say first.
Okay. Ms. Nunez, would you like to go next?
I'll wait.
Okay. Ms. Pye, would you like to go next?
Interesting.
Yeah, very much so.
Let me say this. No, I've said this before. Let me say it again. I am afraid of animals. However, I understand people who like animals. I wish I could have a cat. That's not happening. But I understand people, and I think it's a service that we as a council should provide to the community. As Mr. Radigan said, it helps us with economic development as well. We have many people that are moving here, and I'm sure a lot of them have animals. One of our responsibilities is to do, provide services to the community. One of the things that we did do was, I had information, but so I'm going to try and do it off the top of my head. We gave reductions to the cannabis industry. When we had cannabis industry coming forward with the rates that we had already done, we did them a favor. But we can't do a service to our community? I'm going to leave it right there for now.
I'm going to go next, and I'll give Mr. Gardner. And then I'll start with the second round of comments since the first round, and we're going to get a couple. Look, the process when looking at these types of issues with our community is, you know, we make recommendations to city council members, to our staff members, and over time, they take these, they bundle them up, and then we finally end up in Mike Bush's office and say, how do we finance all this? And that's basically what's happened at this point. The staff gave a report based on the comments that have come over the last two or three years, and then the material is given to the city council to read. In this time period, we have a very well, organization that has been very well renowned in the Coachella Valley that has said that they would help run the hospital. We have the fire chiefs here tonight to tell us how moving forward is so important. And as most of you know, I spent 20 years volunteering as a fireman in this community, and it was, it was an experience to learn more about my community, but that fire engine never stopped 20 years ago, and it hasn't stopped today. And one of the things I promised when I got out of council 14 years ago is that we'd build another fire station. Well, Skyborne was built at that time and then staffed because of the closing of another fire station. And that kind of put us into, and we went to recession. And now we're at a point where we can afford to build another fire station. The east end of our city is underserved, period. And you can see it with the dots that were shown tonight. It has to be built. We have to move forward. We own land up there. It just makes sense. Police department has to grow. They can't continue to be in the same space they're in. We know that. Our senior center has to grow. Cheryl was here tonight. A lot of you weren't here for presentations. They need space, and they are in the same small, little building they've been in since I was a kid. And, and, and I'm old now. But they need to grow. And when you look at our animal services in our community, I get with Ms. Canning saying we need to be very careful if we're going to negotiate with an organization that doesn't have a very good reputation, and we need to make sure it's a clear title before we purchase any building. And if not, we have options, and we still need this bond money to have those options at our, at our forefront. So if we have those options in the future, I say go forward. But there's no reason to leave a building empty in our community that has become a homeless camp, has become a place for graffiti, and is going to sit empty if that organization doesn't get bought out and get pushed out of our community. And I guarantee we're going to negotiate the best price we can get for that if it was my world, and I could, I could say move forward. We've heard the financial consultants tonight talk about how to purchase the bonds. We couldn't be in a better place in, in our financial history of Desert Hot Springs, of all the time I've been on the city council for 14 years. The interest rates are perfect timing. If we wait any longer, they're going to go up. Construction cost is going to go up. Prices of all these tentative improvements and building costs are going to go up. We've got to strike now if we're going to strike at all. These are all necessary services for quality of life in our community, period. I think we need to move forward with it. We will be very careful. I'm sorry there was a bunch of misinformation put on social media about the animal hospital, and I hope that you have the true information tonight, and you can, as our residents, can get behind it and support it. Because I really didn't see a lot of people against it. I see a lot of people cautioning us, and I think we will take that to heart when we move forward. Mr. Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Starting at the top, bonding, not always my first choice, but given that we're lacking so many city services, and we desperately need that new fire station and additional police facilities and senior services, and given that our financial forecast is so good and that we are in a strong position and we can easily handle the bond repayment, even if revenue does decline slightly, I can support moving forward. Regarding the, the animal hospital, I know the history of the organization involved in the building, and I know that much of the opposition for moving forward on this item is rooted in that. What we have is a fully equipped, ready-to-open-tomorrow animal hospital. We've been without vet services in the city since it closed, and getting it reopened is a priority for all of us that have pets in the city. And so if we could purchase that building and its contents, regardless of who we're purchasing it from, and we can contract with a great third-party service provider, as we're doing, one who is ready, willing, and capable of opening it, moving forward with the bond sale and negotiating the purchase of the building and its contents is the smart thing to do in my mind. Failure to move forward just because of past conflicts, because someone in this community don't approve of the organization or its members, thus leaving the building vacant and closed would be cutting off our nose to spite our face. I don't believe that the other options really exist out there for this. Subsidizing a storefront vet in a shopping center is not at all comparable to a fully functional, equipped animal hospital. There's been a lot of speculation and misinformation circulating about this. I have spent the entire afternoon responding to numerous emails on this. So what I would ask residents to do is to please keep in mind the following. So what I would ask residents to do is to please keep in mind the following. One, we're voting to approve the sale of the bonds only at this point. After the bonds are sold and we have the proceeds, then we can begin negotiating the sale of the building and a contract with a third-party operator. And the city would not be operating the hospital at all. We would be owning the building and the equipment, and hopefully, that would be a short time only. If after the bonds are sold, we cannot negotiate an appropriate purchase price, as the mayor noted, we can repay the bonds immediately, and we don't move forward with it. So we're in a...we're not in a lose-lose situation. But it's my hope that we can negotiate a purchase price for the hospital and the building and the equipment, and we can contract with a good organization and staff to operate it, and eventually, I hope that group will purchase that building back from the city, and that would be a huge positive for our city and our residents. And I do take to heart the comments about being cautious in who we're negotiating with, and I understand that. But if we can find a clear title, everything is fine, I say we move forward with it, and for those reasons, I'll be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before I move to the next comment, I forgot to make one comment. I also asked a question with our financial consultant today, if for some reason, construction costs come in less, or on the other side, we don't use all of the money in the purchase. We can use this towards other facilities, because in the bond measure, it will say used towards facilities for Desert Hot Springs. So if there's an upgrade to a park facility, other things that we think are necessary, if there's excess bond money, we can use it towards that. So this is a positive win-win-win-win-win situation for Desert Hot Springs. Now, we've gone through the first round. You two didn't want to speak. Either one liked to arm wrestle?
I was done with the first round.
Would either one of you like to arm wrestle and see who wants to go next?
I'll go.
This is, again, the interesting part that you guys bring up is the fact that, you know, I've been here seven months. Never once have this been whispered at all in the meeting. Every week, I meet with staff, and in those weeks, no new fire station's been brought up, no police department's been brought up, no pet hospital's been brought up. So I find that interesting. I don't know if it's purposely to leave me out of making a decision or planning or discussion. I find that very interesting, myself. I do take that personally. Even though I am the new member of the council, that doesn't mean...I think that's a cop-out to say, "Oh, well, you're here new, so you aren't here in the time to talk about it over the years and years that we've been here." I think it's courtesy to give me an update of what's going on with the future of our city, especially if we're going to go out, ask for $15 million. I do agree with, we need a new fire department, a fire station, I should say, upgrades to our police station. As far as the other two, I think there's other ways to find funding for a pet hospital or a veterinarian to come in. I think this is very poorly put. I think we're just trying to put everything in one basket and hoping, you know, we get something going. I can't stand behind it. I can't support this, and I hope our council members wake up and say, you know, "This is something that we can do as far as a pet hospital anyways, that we can find another way to fund this." I will stand behind the fire station and the police station, so that's it.
Mr. Betts? Yeah, thanks. You know, a word that comes to my mind is sad. We had an excellent, excellent presentation by fire, and wow, what a nice video. I mean, jeez, if we want to see what the proposed building's going to look like, I don't think I've seen as good a presentation as I saw tonight, and a very excellent proposal. And then when I see what's going to be done with the police, I'm thinking to myself, "Okay, equally good." Okay, I can see all that. We've got a dispatch center coming, and I've got some questions for each of you, as I went through and listened to your presentations, and hope we can get into that. This part that's sad is, we've got these two great proposals, and then mixed in with that is this animal hospital that is just consuming all the time because of the baggage that we know is out there with this project, but also because of what I see as a really expensive proposition to bring that service to our city. So I don't want to focus on the animal hospital right now. I want to...this is an agenda item. It's about $15 million in bonds, the majority of which, 14 million, I think, is for police and fire, with an ancillary amount for the Carl May Center. So if the staff is available for questions, or are we allowed to question anything? I'd like to ask the fire, do we have an agreement for shared cost of the fire station with Cal Fire or the county? Or is this something that, once we go ahead with this, the city's just going to have to absorb all the costs if it's our own station? I see the...when you did the map, you showed the service area for the station within the city, but I also saw a lot of other areas of county, Skies Haven and those areas, that are within...was it six minutes?
Four minutes.
Four minutes of response time. So have...was Cal Fire coming to the table with anything on this?
So I'll point out two items. Number one, staffing of the fire station was not something...tonight, we're talking specifically about funding the construction of the fire station, so we can have that conversation later. The second piece I'll point to is Station 36. The city pays $0 for staffing at the fire station.
That's the one out of Skyborne?
That's correct. And over 50...and I'm off the top of my head, but somewhere between 50 and 70% of those calls run are from that fire station are in the city of Desert Hot Springs.
If I could just...I'm sorry, I get impatient when I ask a specific question. Everybody knows I get impatient. If I could just, you know, it helps a lot, speeds things along. I'm just trying to find out, is there any agreement for staffing? And I think you said, "No," at this time. There's nothing.
No, no, because right now, the city has not reached out to the department to contract for staffing of a fire station, because there isn't a fire station. So the agreement that exists between the city and the county specifically right now is for the costs associated with staffing Station 37 and the facility cost for Station 36 only.
And so I presume that the design of the building, construction of the building, you're happy with? You think it's a nice design, preliminary design?
Yes, it was done in consultation with the city. We provided our recommendations and specification requirements for our current fire station designs, and then the city's architect took that information based upon the meeting our requirements, but also meeting the city's budgetary requirements to get the most efficient design possible.
Okay, so as I've always talked about this fire station, I mean, I saw the billboard out there for years. The first I heard about that somebody wanted to do it, I see a billboard. I got residents calling me, you know, "Why are we putting a fire station out here?" And by the way, we had a lot of comments from residents saying that, "Oh, I don't want that noisy thing next to me." And when that discussion came up, I went out and talked to those residents, and I said, "You know, I don't think it's a bad neighbor." And then I went over to the neighborhood in Skyborne and talked to those neighbors, and they said, "They love you guys. You're great, you're quiet, you're a good neighbor, and it's nice having you nearby." And I communicated that back to Hacienda. I don't know if they're all going to show up here. I don't see them here, so maybe we satisfied them. But...so they're all happy to see you now, rather than the early commotion that was presented. But as I'm sitting here as a council member, trying to decide, "Am I going to go put in a building?" A significant part of this discussion is, one, we're going to put in the building. We need that. We finally settled on where the land was going to be. I remember those long discussions, and we're talking about costs. I don't see anything on construction costs here. I just see an amount. But then the critical component is participation by the county on staffing, because you're going to have some benefit of it, or you're just going to say, "Hi, sorry, we don't need it. We have another building." Well, then I start to say, "Okay, where does this fall in line into our budgeting?" I know everybody says, "Well, it's great, we can borrow money," but it doesn't mean we always have to borrow money. We've got to be able to pay for this thing. We're adding $2, $3 million to our costs. So I have that concern. I'm a little concerned that that wasn't worked out already, and that's not a question for you. It's a concern of mine regarding how this is being presented. And the old fire station, I guess some of this bond money is going to renovate the old fire station. Is that correct? And so, you know, we've had a couple renovations there with a lot of splash at the, you know, the new improvements that were made, and it's getting to be like an old building that had a renovation, and then a renovation, and then a renovation. And at the end of the day, you're walking in an old building that doesn't seem to be anything new. I mean, if you've been to Circus Circus in Vegas, it's just one wing after another, and nothing matches, and it's just...well, sorry, Circus Circus, but don't take the $10 room night deal there, okay? So you're getting a perimeter wall, you're getting some upgrades, but isn't it just still another old building again?
The answer is yes, and I would argue that Station 37 has outlived its intended use-life cycle and its design, but I, you know, I don't want to speak for the city manager, but I don't believe the city's in a position to replace 37 and also add services to the east side of the city.
Well, that question comes to my mind also, and I didn't want to get off too much on the ancillary conversation. My main point was, is that as you made this presentation, it's not just the station out there on Hacienda and Long Canyon, it's also the one that's...there's some improvements going to the other one. So, okay, good. Thanks, appreciate that. On the police side, same thing. We're putting old...we're putting money into a 58,000-square-foot new building, right? Is there...I got a question. Are lobbies in police stations always small? I mean, I've been in police stations in Pennsylvania, the lobby was small. I've been here in California, the lobby is small. Is the lobby always small?
Relative to the size of the station.
You don't take on many guests, huh?
No, sir.
So now you have code enforcement inside that building?
No, they're in their separate facility.
But are people going to come visit code enforcement there?
They get daily foot traffic there.
Okay, so that's where they're going to go? So, no, they'll be in a different building?
The same building they're in now.
Okay, so if somebody has a code issue, they can go visit them and have a much more... they get something better than a small lobby?
Correct, same parking lot, shared parking lot, but two separate buildings.
Okay, good, all right. Nothing wrong with a small lobby, I was just curious on that one. Dispatch going into the old building, why not the new building? I'm sorry if I'm getting...but it seems to me if, you know, dispatch, we're going to have some issues on hiring and retaining people. It's better in a nice new facility than a new one, and maybe I'm thinking this too much, but I'm just curious as to why the decision was to put dispatch in the old facility and not the new one.
Sure. Couple reasons. One is, we're ready to move forward with dispatch right now. That's been funded, and as mentioned, we're ready to get started with that construction in August and September of this year and get that operational, as opposed to waiting the 18 to 24 months or longer for the new building to be built and be able to put them in there. The second portion is the design, the way we have this designed, if going forward, is the current building would basically be the administration building and professional staff associated with the department, while the new building would be the operation, the field operations in the investigative bureau.
Okay, so staffed and just throw this on you and say, "This is the way we're going to do it." You had some input in the design?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, good. You've had a whole lot more advance notice on this than I have, so I'm going to share my fellow council members' concern that, you know, on some sort of note. So thanks, I really appreciate that. That's all the questions I had for you on police, so now we'll get on to this other elephant in the room, the animal hospital. I just...you begin, I don't mean to cut you off, but there is the director from the Animal Samaritans here, and some board members. If you had direct questions for them, they possibly could answer them. Okay, I don't know if I'll get to that or not. My questions are...I've got some other problems, it's not with the Animal Samaritans. So, you know, first off, there was no wish list, and I appreciate that there has been wish lists, as you noted, you know, at the beginning of your comments. Yeah, I got it. I'm not keying off of that too much, but it just strikes...it strikes a chord. Well, I'm happy to discuss with fellow council members. I've got some questions for you guys. So the animal hospital certainly isn't on my wish list, and the main point there is, it always comes down to these types of decisions in the city is, "Well, jeez, what do you mean? You don't want an animal hospital." Well, we all know, we need an animal hospital services in this city. And the question is, where do you go? Now, I'm just going to recount for you, my...how I came to hear that somebody wants to spend a million dollars on that building, is, you know, we had them going to my regular staff meetings, meeting with staff once a week, and something came up and said, "Oh, by the way, we're going to go to council with a bond." I said, "Oh, that's interesting. When?" And they said, "Next week, or two weeks from now, next council meeting." And then, you know, a conversation about the animal hospital came up within the last, I'm going to say, month, and it was, "Hi, we're thinking of doing something with the animal hospital." I had no idea it was this far along. And so I casually mentioned to other entities in this city, I'm working with, for example, Amy Shaw out there at the Mission Lakes Marketplace, and we were talking about, she's going to expand that facility with some new tenants, which is good news. We're waiting for that shopping center to fill up, and she says, I said, "Well, are you looking to bring anybody else in?" And she says, "A vet." And I said, "Well, that's interesting, because the city is looking to try and bring in a vet. What do you got going?" And she says that, "Well, we've got people interested, but, you know, it's obviously the cost to come in." So I floated the idea of, "Well, what if the city participated in that effort?" And that resulted in a meeting with Amy and staff, and I got the paperwork here that said, you know, we came up with a proposal, and basically, it goes like this. That shopping center owner would do all of the build-outs to make it look like a building, so you know, you've got the building is covered, there's plenty of parking out there, and then the city might participate, the conversation went, for, you know, to secure the equipment that's needed, nice, new, modern, new equipment, surgical, x-ray, centrifuge, whatever else is needed, and do that on some type of a zero-interest loan for three years, and then the city's clean and done with it. We don't have this big, huge asset that we're owning, we're not in the real estate business. We've just, through typical economic development, helped facilitate it, and the suggestion is, is that if the city would help a new operator come in and cover the cost, well, would they be interested? And so reached out to several entities, 12 to be exact, and six of them said that they would be interested in those terms. So I'm thinking, "Okay, well, maybe we've got a better deal." So I take that into our staff with Amy, and she presents this, and I've got a copy here for all the council members and the public, if you want it. I'm just reading off it now. And, you know, I find it interesting that my fellow council member here, Gary Gardner, mentions that there was some kind of proposal presented, but what I'm curious about is, why wasn't that presented here? You had this deal, and, you know, the answer I got was, "Well, we're already too far along on this other one." And I never think you're too far along on a million-dollar deal, so go look and see if you can do something for less money. So I'm convinced you could have an animal surgical veterinary unit, not just a clinic, in another building. And I see Animal Samaritans is here, and they can correct me if I hear they're here. I recognize them. But they were contacted today, and I guess they said they liked the deal at the animal hospital, but they'd also be interested in something else if something else came along. They were one of the peoples that responded favorably. The other question that comes up with the provider is, what's the cost to the residents? I mean, we don't want to go down to the valley, because the expense is high. You had Tim Brophy mention, Tim Rattigan Brophy mentioned, you know, he doesn't go down to the valley because of the cost, he goes up to Banning. And by the way, you know, we made the same decision with our pet. Banning animal hospital was a great deal. But so that's a primary consideration of people. What's the examination of these applicants? If I got 12 here, and I'm going to pick one, I want to do some analysis of what their veterinary costs are going to be. Now, if you look at the debt service on this building, which Michael Bush gave us, you're looking at an annual cost, monthly rent of $10,261 per month, $123,000 per year on that debt service. That's a huge number. You compare that to this other deal, and it's...it works out to $46,000 a year or $3,600 per month for the same deal, and we're not paying that one. So I haven't seen any kind of examination of this. We just run it headlong in, we drive up, we drive down Palm Drive, say, "Oh, look, there's an animal hospital. That's where we go. It's got equipment." I've got people who are really familiar with that facility. They've been in there, they've worked in there, day in and day out, and the answer I got is, the x-ray machine is good and valuable, but the lab equipment and the autoclav machine, the word they used is very old, they actually used the word ancient, and the centrifuge is ancient, and I'm getting beyond my pay grade. I don't know about veterinary equipment, but I know if you're going to go lease new equipment, you're going to get state-of-the-art, and a little bit of research I did, this stuff can get old and costly in this digital age. So, you know, and on the public comment, I know not many didn't show up here, but we got lots of letters, as Councilman Gardner indicated, from people, and I think all of it said, "Slow down, there's a problem here." Now, the biggest problem with that animal clinic, and you can't avoid it, and this public speaker said so, is the owner, the people who actually, the entity. And I think because it's come up and been raised as an issue, it's important that everybody understand exactly the problem that's there. It's not just a matter of, "We're cutting off our nose to spite our face to get this building." One, we're cutting up, you know, if we don't do it, one reason is, it's way too expensive. Another reason is the people that are involved, and there's a couple issues there. First off, the nonprofit that's there is in, unless I can hear otherwise, is in delinquent standing, and according to, as a Department of Justice and a...from the state of California Department of Justice and the...who was the other one? The DOJ and the...Jennifer, help me out. The, uh, D, the DOJ and the, uh, Jennifer, help me out. Who's the other one on there? It's on the folder I gave you. DOJ, I'm just looking for the initials.
I, I don't know what you're.
Do you have the folder in front of you?
Oh, here's a folder that you provided to me.
Yeah, what's, what's the initials on that? I don't need the folder. I just need the initials. You can just.
I'm not sure.
You can just read it right there. It's right in front of you. It's really easy.
AG.
Oh, the AG?
AG, thank you. Attorney General and the Department of Justice are all showing that their registration is expired. Now, for some reason, staff, I, I've talked to Jennifer. I gave her this. I was handed it today, this stack of stuff. I haven't had a chance to go over it. Just had enough to go over it and say that if they are not a properly, uh, you know, if they are not up to date in their filings, um, then they can't sell anything that's in that charitable trust. They, they don't have the right. If they're not current on their filings, they're not, they can't sell anything. They can't dispose of any charitable assets. That's the ruling in an email from, um, I'm reading, I read here from, uh, Becerra's office when he looked into this. He said, sorry, you can't sell that stuff if you're a charitable trust and a delinquent status. So we got a title issue as somebody else noted, apparently. Apparently here, if somebody up here knows, there's a title issue. So now, it's not a small matter, what's, uh, gone on with this entity there. And I asked, I provided a YouTube video, and it's not that long. It's a couple, a few minutes. And I asked Gerald to have that queued up. Joe, could you play that for us now? This is.
They're really necessary. I wasn't worried to be.
Well, it's.
I'm showing a past video.
Well, this is, this is because I think the question has come up, calling into question who it is that we're dealing with. And somebody said, well, we're, you know, look, I understand we're dealing with somebody.
That's isn't necessary, yes.
Yeah, yeah, I think it is. And I actually, I.
He wants us to sit for three minutes and watch a video.
I appreciate the, the comment, but I, I just made it that myself.
Sushi dinners, cosmetic surgery, and handbags. Suspicious swiping, all done on the dime of a local nonprofit. Tonight, I-Team investigator Brooke Berry continues her exclusive investigation into allegations against one of the largest animal shelters in Southern California.
Tonight, we're revealing just how serious the possible misuse of donor funds could be for the Humane Society of the Desert. Plus, we've learned not only is the organization itself investigating what happened, so is the Sheriff's Department and now the IRS.
The credit card statements reek like the itinerary of a luxury vacation shopping spree and pampering package all in one. Time at the Omni Rancho List Palmas, the Riviera Palm Springs, the Miramonte Resort, and the La Quinta Resort, St. John's, Sunglass Hut, and Gucci, then Planet Beauty, Sephora, Hot Spot Tanning. Plus.
Cosmetic surgery, Victoria's Secret, that's pretty blatant, right?
A hundred and eighty-four dollars.
Yeah, unless there's dogs wearing negligees.
That's right. Dogs.
Come on.
Reams of documents obtained by News Channel Three show hundreds of charges accrued and paid for on Wells Fargo and American Express business credit cards issued to the Humane Society of the Desert and former President Melinda Bustos. Certified public accountant Brian Wax took a look.
Again, what does it have to do with a nonprofit organization? Nothing that I could see.
Or animals.
Or animals, right.
What would that constitute in the eyes of the IRS?
Fraud.
The statements we obtained show tens of thousands of dollars spent at luxury resorts, stores, and restaurants over the course of two or more years, which eventually got the attention of board members. The day after a more than four thousand dollar check was written by the Humane Society to cover a Wells Fargo credit card balance in Bustos's name, the board suspended her to determine if any improprieties exist. Documents obtained by News Channel Three show in May of two thousand and eighteen, Bustos was also prohibited from contacting current or former employees, signing documents, or using company assets like computers or vehicles.
Uh, yeah.
Hi, Adam. Thanks for calling.
Forensic accountant Adam Ochoa was hired by the board to conduct a forensic investigation, which he summarized to the board in December.
Did you have any obligation to take what you found and give it to police?
No, but I did.
And why did you do that?
I felt that the Sheriff's Department was going to come see me eventually.
Ochoa says he looked over bank statements, legal forms, and tax paperwork.
There's some areas that are gray, such as someone paying themselves salaries, that I, I couldn't confirm if it was authorized or not, such as purchasing, you know, at a department store or reimbursement for beauty care. It could be as high as six hundred thousand dollars.
The IRS agreed. Board minutes we obtained show an audit of the Humane Society revealed personal annulment. The IRS says five oh one C threes must not be operated for the benefit of the creator or their family or shareholders of the organization. Bustos not only sat on the board, so did her husband.
Sushi, True Care Cosmetic Surgery, True Care Cosmetic Surgery, to the tune of several thousand dollars a month.
A month?
A month.
That's, that's news.
Okay, Joe, thanks.
Current Humane Society board members Phil Cox and Kim Hardy agree to.
Okay, so I don't think we need to go any further to point out that the people who have stepped up here with concerns see that this is the activity. Now, if the board had, you know, apparently she was fired from the board, and the state said in their financial filings, but now all of a sudden, there's a press release that, um, they're back and that she is back. And so that raises questions in a lot of people's minds, and that's a lot of the emotion that's coming forward here from the comments is, is, you know, where is a million dollars going? Okay? Is, is a million dollars going into help animals or is it going off to what? And so people have a real problem with that. That's, you know, one of the speakers who stepped up to the podium today, is here specifically sitting to this meeting, or one of the concerns sitting to the meeting for that. So, um, I'm going to get back to, I'm going to wrap up my comments here a little bit. I'm going to get back to, um, what I started out with is that we have a great proposal, something we need to do. Fire station's been talked about for a long time. Um, I would have liked to have seen more details on that ahead of time and had a little more info. It's obviously been worked on for a long time, but I think I'm really good with the fire station, and I'm really good with the police station. I just can't understand why we polluted this, two great things, with something else that, one, is a bad financial deal, way too costly. And I know somebody's going to say, oh, but we got to have it now. And there's other options. And, um, you know, the, um, it's, it's not a matter of whether we get an animal hospital or not. And here we are, just talking about the animal hospital again. It's such a, it's such an overwhelming negative in this deal that that's all anybody's talked about. It, you know, Jan talked about the animal hospital. Scott talked about the animal hospital. Gary talked about the animal hospital. Roger talked about the police and the fire. Good job. But the, um, this animal hospital is just a no starter for me. And I hate to have to vote against a fire station because of this. Um, but, uh, I just would really hope that this council will say, you know what, there's other options out there. We've got solid options that are presented. As a council member, I want to see what those other options before I go spend a million dollars of the public's money, and before I put a million dollars in the hands of an organization that, one, their status as a five oh one C is in question, and they may not even be able to sell those assets. And here, we're going to have people go out and go out to bond. Um, the, the, the numbers are astronomical on, uh, the debt service that they're going to have to pay. I don't have any idea what... Do we have a lease agreement with them?
No, we do not.
Okay, so you went and made a presentation to their board, right?
No, we did not.
Oh, you didn't go?
No, we did not.
Okay, but they have a letter of, uh, some type of, what is it called? A letter of intent?
Interest.
Oh, the interest. And what did that letter say?
So, uh, the Animal Samaritans toured the Humane Society building and indicated that they would be interested in further discussions with the city to talk about a lease agreement with an option to purchase. So it literally is a letter of interest.
Okay, so, and that's fair. That's good. Their letter of interest, we don't know if it includes ten thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars a month in lease payment.
Correct, because none of those terms have been even discussed.
So we're going to go buy a building, and if they aren't willing to pay ten thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars a month, then we're going to need that because someday we may own a building? What do we need that building for?
For clarification, uh, the, the monetary request that's being asked is up to a million dollars. There's been no real property negotiations that have taken place. So the actual cost or negotiation for the purchase of the animal hospital is not even been discussed. That would be an additional discussion that would take place with the city council in closed session. Uh, and so what, what's being asked is for up to a million dollars, but that doesn't mean all of that would need to be expended.
Okay, but we're instructing, according to this, issuance of, the recommendation for staff is the issuance and sale of twenty-twenty-one taxes and lease revenue bonds to finance fourteen thousand of capital improvement projects and one million in taxable bonds for purchase of real property. So your motion here is to go purchase it?
No.
Well, that's what it says here in the staff report. And if we're going to, so when it comes time for a motion, somebody's going to change that, not just say, you know, move staff report. Somebody here, I hope, is going to say, you know, Russ Darn, you're right. You raise some good points here. And, uh, we're going to, uh, take a little closer look at this, but there's just way too many problems with this animal hospital to, uh, to, uh, get into this one. Um, it's, again, it's, it's, you know, it's not a matter of do we need it? I mean, you know, you know, I, I just, given the troubling reports of misappropriation of funds, to me, it's just unconscionable to put a million dollars in the hands of this organization, especially when we have other solid viable, um, options to bring in surgical and veterinary services to our city. And we have a significant legal question over the transfer of this property, whether or not we can even go ahead with this deal. And all of this stuff, we should be investigating before staff is bringing this project to us, this point, this portion of this project to us. And, um, you know, we got a delinquent status on a charitable trust is the last information I got. They can't sell this property, um, until that's cleared up. And, um, who knows if the Department of Justice is willing to, given the, the history of this organization and the, the individuals that are now back involved in it. Uh, it's all questions that are out there. There should be legitimate questions anytime you're buying a piece of property. So, um, I, I just can't see going ahead with the animal hospital part of this. And I would really hope that staff could bifurcate, that my fellow council members would bifurcate this discussion. Go with the winner. Go with the great program. Go with what we all know we need. And then let's save this other part of it for another day and go look and truly explore options. And I believe staff has a solid option, and they should have presented it to us tonight. So I'll leave it at that, Mr. Mayor, and wait for round two.
At this time, I'm going to make a motion to approve the tactics and lease revenue bonds to finance fourteen thousand dollars of capital improvement projects and one million taxable bonds for the purchase of real property. And the negotiations to be done for clean titles of the animal hospital here in Desert Hot Springs, if that's not feasible, to look at other options to bring in and sign a contract with Animal Samaritans in the future.
Second.
Excuse me, Mayor. I believe you said fourteen thousand?
I'm sorry. Let's try fourteen million. Fourteen million, uh, of capital improvement projects and one million in taxable bonds.
Second.
There's motion, second, uh, discussion.
Yes. I talked about what I was told on Facebook, and that's why I went to, uh, the veterinarian hospital, but I'm going to say a little something else. First of all, I cannot let you attack staff. You're not a victim, and it's not just because you've been on for seven months.
Mr. Ninjas, you're going to let her say her comments? You'll be, you can respond when she's done.
If you say, you didn't say that, then I rest my case. With respect to the fire department, we need a fire department. We talked about needing a fire department. The mayor has talked about needing a fire department. The Public Safety Commission has talked about needing a fire department. I watched their meetings. I know how they started that. They went and met with city staff and found out they had the same thing in mind. I asked staff, what do you know about this? That's how I find out. Public's, uh, the police department. The police department needs, needs a building. I used to do what was called Christmas, um, spaghetti, and I would give it to the police department and other staff. Police department has such a small kitchen. And then when I would bring stuff for Thanksgiving, they had such a small kitchen. I had to put it in a crock pot and plug it in. They got, in the last twenty years, they got an exercise room that's outside. We keep saying we need more police. Where are you going to put them? When dispatch came up, I asked staff, where are you going to put them? They told me. I said, well, what are you going to do with the detective? They explained it to me. And this is why we have to do it. Now, you got to ask some questions when you hear stuff that is happening. The mayor, Senior Center. The Senior Center needs a larger facility. In the United States, baby boomers are getting older. Large part of the community. And as Ms. Hunter said, they're getting younger and they want to do more stuff. And we can't leave them. That's part of our constituent also. At the beginning of this, the mayor said, we have not negotiated. The mayor said he recognizes people are asking us to slow down. I heard, um, I think I'm done.
Any more comments before we move to the vote?
Yes, thank you. I just, again, want to remind folks that we have slowed down on this. We are not buying the building tonight. We are merely issuing the bonds. Once those bonds are in, and we have the, 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 the funds on hand, then staff can go out and negotiate a purchase price. And it could be up to a million. It might be seven hundred thousand, might be eight hundred thousand, might be nine hundred thousand. We don't know. But we are not throwing a million dollars tonight at the Humane Society. We simply are not doing that. We are authorizing the sale of bonds up to a million dollars to give us some negotiating power to go and spend it. And if we don't spend it on that, we can use it on other things, or we can pay the bonds off. Real simple. We are not buying something tonight. As for this other option, this is the quickest option that we've got. We can get this up and open sooner. The Mission Lakes Marketplace can build a new facility if they even actually have a place to do it, and they have the funds to it, and they have a committed tenant to come in and do it. All of that's got to take place before that. We have a committed tenant ready to come in. We have a staff ready to go out and negotiate once those bonds are sold. This animal hospital, in theory, could be opened by the end of the year if everything goes right. So, again, we're, we're going to have to come back and discuss the purchase price of the, of the building and whether we want to move forward. And staff will negotiate with that. They will find out if there is a clear title. They will find out if it's, if we can purchase it from them, if they're allowed to sell it or not. All of that will be down the road once the bonds are sold. So again, the question tonight is, are we going to sell the bonds? And in my mind, and I'm voting yes on that.
Mr. Betts? Yeah, so I just, you know, want to be clear. I, I think it's in fairness to Councilmember Gardner that, um, you, in this forum, in this world that we operate, we all can't get together out and over coffee and talk about this. I can't talk to everybody about it. I couldn't share with you this information until tonight. And obviously, you've heard about it from staff, but I can tell that what you've heard and the questions you have are good, legitimate questions, but I can tell you that they're all easily answered, that it's not going to take forever, that it's, it's a much quicker proposition than you're making out. And I, I just want to be fair to you. I think the situation here is that you haven't been given a, a fair presentation of, of what it is. And I think if you and I had a chance to talk more than what we're going to take up time here tonight, uh, I'd bring you around to saying, okay, it's a reasonable option. I'm not a stupid person. I've researched it, okay? And I think you probably agree. I'm not a stupid person. I don't think you are. So I would ask that you would say, okay, you know, if you're going to go ahead and vote for the bond to make the funding viable, that you would at least join me in instructing staff to seriously consider not just that building, but other options. And as long as, you know, I mean, that at least is a little more palatable to me, that it's on the table, that, you know, if something can be done without undue delay, the idea is, we want it quickly. We want it to be affordable for the residents. We want a good deal, and we want to watch over taxpayer money. I mean, I would think it would be reasonable that you would ask staff to, you know, look, let's take a look at other options included in this motion, is to look at other options on this animal hospital. And so, and then the other thing I have, Mr. Mayor, is can we, before we go ahead with this, can we read back on the motion? Because I, I just want to be clear on it, because I'm hearing different things on this. I want to make sure that.
I want to make sure that what's printed here is not what we're doing. So if I get the city clerk to restate the motion?
I'll restate the motion since I made the motion, but before I do that, let me ask Mr. Nunez, did you have any comments last?
Absolutely. I, the only thing I have to say is, what's, what's the hurry? There should be no hurry. If we can negotiate something better, if we can look at different options, what's the hurry? Simple as that.
The hurry is the fact that the bond market is, is, is it a perfect opportunity now to sell bonds?
Timeout, didn't get called on. Um, I'm going to restate my motion, and I'm going to answer your question, or first I'm going to answer your question, then restate the motion. This isn't a hurry to you, at, I mean, you're saying it's a hurry right now because of the way it's coming across, because you feel you didn't get the information, I respect that. This hasn't been hurried in my book, this has been talked about for years since that animal hospital closed. My motion is, as stated on the screen, is what staff recommendation is, including to make sure that the animal hospital has a clear title, to negotiate, uh, that something be brought back in closed session, to be for discussion before we purchase, and other options can be utilized on the table if that is not viable to the council. At the same time, I would love to see a, um, a, a letter of intent signed with Animal Samaritans that no matter if we purchase that hospital or another location, that we go into service with them in our community, which is much needed. Mr. Mayor, if I could, just for clarification, because right here, that was a point I raised, and I appreciate your motion, that's a little more palatable, uh, but it says here, and 1,000 taxable bonds for the purchase of real property. And. It doesn't mean, if, if real property means a real property, it doesn't have to be the animal hospital, that's the first hospital, that's what I would love to see come back to and negotiate, and, and us talk about it as council. What I'm doing is trying to open the door so that staff doesn't have to come back again, they can go out and negotiate. If this falls through, doesn't have a clean title, there's no way we're going to purchase this, they could move forward on purchasing something else, and we're coming back with other options for the animal Samar, animal hospital, a animal hospital. Okay, so the last thing I want to say is, I appreciate everybody indulging me in the time that it took to explain my view and discuss this, but the, the deal with this animal hospital is so bad, is so egregious as far as, you know, some of the elements involved, that there's just absolutely no way that I could vote to move forward with this, as much as I still want to see the fire and the police go forward.
Just want to thank you, Russ, that was very informative information, thank you.
I call for the question.
Motion passes with Mayor Pro Tem Betts and Councilmember Nunez against.
Thank you, everybody, spending the evening with us. You don't have to wait till the end of our meeting, though, it's going to end in a few minutes. You're more than welcome to leave if you have other opportunities or options or places to be, rather than spending it with the city council in Desert Hot Springs tonight, but thank you for coming out for the passionate debate. Um, moving to the consent calendar, we have no items that were pulled from the consent calendar. Future agenda items can be discussed with the city manager's office. Do I have any other public comments on Zoom?
No, we do not.
Do I have any public comments in person? Uh, before I adjourn the meeting, I just want to remind the council that I understand heated debates happen. I just ask that you don't interrupt each other, you give everybody the opportunity to speak when they have the chance, and if you have to abruptly say what you have to say, try to refrain yourself. Thank you very much.
Make one comment on that, please?
Yes.
I think you did a great job running this meeting on a very difficult subject.
Don't try to get on my good side now.
No, you did good, you know, we're, we're okay.
I'm joking. With that, our next meeting is going to be, uh, right here, July 6th. I hope everybody has a safe 4th of July, remember the animals out there since we were talking about them, so use safe and sane fireworks, um, and don't use them around animals. There is the July 2nd, 4th of July, uh, event here in Desert Hot Springs at Mission Springs Park. We hope to see you all out there, or at least watch it safely, be safe out there. July 6th will be our last meeting before we take a much needed six-week break from the city council. I appreciate everybody here tonight, appreciate the city council and all your comments. We are adjourned.